Hi, good evening. The meeting of the Groton Board of Education, a regular meeting on June 23, 2025. It is 6:03. Board members in attendance, Mike Whitney, Jen White, Matthew Shulman, Dean Antipas, Jay Whiteloff, Andrea Ackerman, myself, Adrian Johnson. Did I get everybody?
I think did.
All right. So the first item on the agenda is the Fledge of Allegiance. All right, I'll start it.
......................................................
All right. The second item on the agenda is recognition and participation of visitors and delegates. And we are excited that we have one representative, Dan Gieske, meeting here today, and we'll get a few extra.
Do you want to come up to the podium? Or you want to sit by Sam?
You can just sit there if you want.
Find a microphone.
Perfect, now I'm by a microphone. Oh, boy. Hi, Sam, how are you? Getting deja vu?
Yeah.
Like eight years ago. So, well, good evening, everyone. State Rep. Dan Gieske here. I do know Representative Bumgarner is out of state and on travels with his wife, so safe travels to him. And then Senator Summers, I do not have confirmation. So, but I'm here to give you a legislative update on what we did at the legislature regarding education. So we did two major education bills. The first one we did was 5001, that affected special education. And then the other one we did was, it was basically an act affecting education, it was SB 1. What these bills are is, we call them omnibus bills. They're a bunch of little bills that we put into one big bill. And normally, an omnibus bill has a large consensus, then it's going to pass and be signed by the governor. So that's why we do it like that. And then we have like a, we do a three-hour kind of like review on each of the bill. So I'm just going to go over. I read the bills again, but, and I just kind of highlighted, I'm going to go section by section, and then anything that's going to affect the Board of Education slash our local school district, I highlighted, and I'm going to go into a little bit of detail on. So we'll start with HP 5001, which was the special education bill. Section 1 was just definitions. And then Section 2, it prohibits changing in pricing from special education, private special education providers to Board of Educations. So they can't change the price on you mid-year. So it helps you stabilize your budget when you guys are planning. So that was a really good thing. Section 3, it requires the State Department of Education to create a rate payment schedule. So defining that, and then also kind of helping with your budget. And then it also includes billing standards, and then private providers must be approved by the Connecticut General Assembly. And this part excludes transportation, because transportation, it's, they've made it separate, and that is Section 4 of the bill. Section 5, it defines reasonable cost as what actual cost to fill the need of an AEP. So when you are outsourcing to a private provider, when they give you the billing for a special ed student, it defines as what is their actual need, like what are they spending the child on? So that's also a protective measure to Board of Educations. And then this is what we did in Section 6 and Section 7, this is the big thing. Section 6 creates a special education grant for local boards of educations. And what it does, it separates it from the minimum balance requirement. So it doesn't go, it's kind of a separate, it's a grant that's separate from your budget, so it doesn't affect MBR. Groton is to receive $227,133 in that money, and there is Senator Summers. So it can be used on six things: direct service, intervention, so students who need help, but it's not defined by special education; academic and behavior intervention; hiring salaries of special ed teachers, aides, and reading specialists; equipment purposes; curriculum materials. What it cannot be used for is administrative, defuncting, operating expenses, and then third-party contractor. And then it requires an expenditure report, too, that you would send back to the state. Section 8 is requiring licensing for private providers. Section 9 is unannounced onsite inspections of private providers, not big deals for boards of ed. Section 10, you can't send somebody out of district if conditions are not met by the PPT reviews before sending them. So they have, in order to use an out-of-district provider for a special ed child, it has to meet, it has to meet the PPT requirements. Section 11 requires SDE to publish model contracts for these private providers. Section 12, it requires a Board of Ed report for each special education student to SDE. So what would be included, the Board of Ed would need to send to SDE? The placement is from the PPT, where the placement is being done, how much the Board of Ed is paying, if it's an outplacement, the services provided, the location of the student, an agreement on a special education nondisclosure agreement with parents, and then any additional information that SDE requires. It's kind of a little work in progress right now, so SDE is going to be working with that. Section 13 is function behavior assessment before out-of-district placement. So basically, it requires a function behavior assessment if you're going to go outside, getting, letting the private providers know what is going to be needed. Section 14 and Section 15 were studies. Section 15, this will really help our teachers. It requires the State Department of Education, OPM, the Bergen Commission to create a workload analysis model. And it kind of is like how many teachers you're going to kind of need based on a special ed requirement, so it kind of like helps that out a little bit. Section 17 is for an SDE report to state agency, doesn't affect you guys. Section 18 and 19, this is for due process hearings, when there is a dispute between special education providers and, special education personnel and parents in a school. So it requires all claims are disclosed before the hearing, all evidence reserved, the hearings have to be done within four days, and then the person that does the hearing is somebody from the State Department of Education. So what is really kind of best practice is kind of figuring out before we get to the hearing stage, this is like kind of the doomsday scenario. And then there are certain requirements, you know, it's a change in child, that will quite require a hearing to happen, so it'd be a change in childcare service, and then a Board of Ed parent, if it fails to provide, Board of Ed or a parent fails to provide a FAP. And the hearing officer, based on the way the legislation was written, does have a lot of leeway. So just kind of be mindful of that. Section 20 is commission supervisors, private providers, doesn't really matter too much, boards of ed. Section 21, it changes the IEP form to include who is implementing that child's IEP. So what teacher, what parent educator, what's kind of, who's making sure that each section of the IEP. And then Section 2022 is excess cost sharing projections by SDE. And then Section 23 and Section 24 were additions to certain previous sections that I had mentioned already. Section 25 is Board of Ed regions requirements and private provider enrollment report, that's from the state, so you guys don't have to worry about that. So there are little tidbits here in 5001. I was appointed by the Majority Leader to serve on the state Special Education Task Force. So I had met with tons of parents and local board members that have been appointed to that board, kind of hearing their concerns of the draft legislation that came out, which was in HB 7277 and SB 1561. So kind of taking those ideas and making sure that our parents were protected, our local school boards weren't burdened too much, and we could improve the quality of services to special education to students both here and across the state. Senator Summers, I just gave you an update, I just went through HP 5001. I can go through SB 1 if you want me to do that as well.
You know, I don't think we need to read you the, what's in the bill.
Yep.
If you go right online and you look at, if you pop in SB 1 or 5001, and you look at bill summary, it'll go through section by section and tell you everything that you need to know. Like, I don't know whether it's really helpful for us to just read through what's in there.
Yeah, and I emailed it to Superintendent Austin.
Yeah.
I sent it, so it's 33 pages, both of them, sorry.
Okay, that's all right. So, you know, when you have time, as a board member, you can go and look at the bill, you know, if you want to read the bill, you can read the bill. It's pretty heavy in legal language, but the summary is really helpful. And it also has an OFA summary that can look at what the cost impact should be, rather than just kind of go through it. I, you know, I can rattle it off, but, you know, it sounds like you've already gone through 5001. I think one of the biggest things that we can bring back is the fact that there was bills to get rid of the Alliance districts that did not make it out. And I stood on the Education Committee, lots of hearings, lots of public testimony. And I think the biggest things, as the ranking member of appropriations, is we were able to pass the Hold Harmless Clause, which was something that was in the appropriation, it was not in the governor's bill, it was in the appropriations bill. And that was one of the big negotiations during the final part of the budget, was to make sure that we held you harmless, which, you know, you were looking at a loss of almost $1.4 million that is hard to make up in this environment. So I'm not sure how long we're going to be able to continue with holding everyone harmless, because we are essentially overfunding schools, and there's other schools that are underfunded because we're, we continue to over, according to the formula, I don't think we're overfunding, but according to the formula, we are overfunding districts. The, you know, the issue that we do run into, which is helpful, is that there's many of us that represent really rural towns, and they are severely impacted by this, because just because you lose three kids doesn't mean that you lose a teacher, et cetera. And so we do have a pretty strong contingency of the rural communities and in eastern Connecticut that are really strong on the holding harmless. But can't promise that that's going to stay forever, or that they're not going to continue to look at eliminating Alliance districts. That was originally in 5001, and that was something that we were able to take out of 5001. And I'm not sure everybody knows what Alliance districts are, but I'm sure you guys do on the Board of Education. But for those people that may be watching this, Alliance districts are held harmless for five years on their funding, they continue to get their, their funding. We also, in appropriations, there was, when we were bringing out the appropriations budget, there was a move to actually fully fund special education. So there was a motion to bring it from $40 million to $84 million, which I believe most of us, if not all of us, supported to make sure that, because the $40 million that we are putting in extra for special education still falls short of what, where we need it to be. So there is hope and a push to try to fully fund that. We weren't able to do that in this session, but we did get halfway there, which is more than we thought we would get. Before, there's a Special Education and Expansion Development Grant, I'm not sure if you touched on that.
Yep.
And then for the town side, the town aid has pretty much stayed, pretty much flattened. There is some slight increases, so on the town side, the town is in good shape also. So I don't know if there's any specific items that you wanted to talk about. There are some controversial parts of these bills that I'm, you know, sure that you are well aware of. There's a controversial part with school librarians that are now given qualified immunity. Our policemen are not, but our librarians are. Librarians will be able to bring in any book that they feel is appropriate. The Board of Education has no say. And the librarians cannot really be reprimanded, they're given qualified immunity. I don't really see that as an issue in Groton. You guys all work well together. But in other towns, there has been difficulties with librarians putting certain books that maybe parents or some board members may feel are not age-appropriate in certain areas. And that, that caused a big, there was a lot of talk about that on the floor, especially more in the House than in the Senate. But that bill did pass, so that's something that you just should be aware of. You know, some districts, it might be more troubling than others, but you all have worked really well together. There are some positive things in 5001, that I think that, you know, if you have time, you should all just kind of take a look at the categories, and you can read through what the summaries are. And if you have any questions specifically, we certainly can get back to you. The same thing for SB 1, they're sort of companion bills on that. There is also a big budget shift, because I'm the ranking of, and I'm still on education, but my focus really is the budget. The governor took $300 million out of our surplus and basically took it off-budget, put it to the side for early childhood education. The commissioner of early childhood can take 10% of that, so $30 million. And going forward, there's going to be any surplus, if it's $300 million, they're going to continue to take that and put this into this fund, it's like a trust fund, that eventually will go to fund pre-K education in the state of Connecticut. So that's kind of, you know, where we are. Many of us did not think that was a great idea, the way it was done, we all believe in pre-K, but we had, you know, we have these guardrails that everybody voted on. Many of us think that violates the, the guardrails, and it's off-budget now, we would have wanted to see that on-budget. But, you know, I think everybody supports, I shouldn't say everybody, most people support early childhood education. And it also helps the massive daycare problem that we have. If we have kids, you know, full-time in pre-K, their parents aren't struggling to find, you know, childcare for them. So that is one thing that has shifted. It's not that we're going to be spending $300 million on early childhood education right now, we're just setting it up, so only 10% of that will be spent to sort of establish what the program's going to look like.
Now, will any of that be in grant formation? Because we did roll out our transition K, which is sort of a pre-K, and it's a full day. And it's been very successful, and it would be lovely to be able to continue it through grants, but do you know anything?
That has not been established at this point.
Okay.
Like, exactly what that's going, going, how she's going to use that funding, and, you know, what that's going to look like at this point. Yes, Dean, sorry.
All right, well, Dean, then Matthew, you had a question.
So, the assignment in the, of the IEP provider, others are going to be explicit, the people providing the services will be explicitly named. What happens if, if you know, what happens if the, it's necessary to change the people out? Is there some sort of elaborate process that has to be done? Or do you just simply say, well, I know, we told the state this, but midstream, we've had to change providers, somebody retired, or they're on maternity leave, or the, you know, we thought it was better, this combination was better.
Yeah.
Were we allowed to do that without penalty, or is there?
Yeah, yeah, you just have to notify. So you just have to notify the Board of Education and the parent that it's happening, so they put that in there for that purpose, and it like uses that as an example in the bill analysis as well. And it only requires, and it's like if, for example, if a teacher goes out on maternity leave, and they're going to be, it's longer, more, longer than 10 days, you just have to notify that there's going to be a change in the person implementing. It's just kind of like, I think it's kind of respectful, you know who's working with your child.
Right.
So that's just basically, there's not really a penalty associated with it. I'm sure there will be eventually, but it's kind of like, it's
No, there won't be.
No, it probably won't. But, you know, you never, you never know, it's just kind of a, in my opinion, it's a respectful thing to do, just making sure parents know who's educating their child.
Well, at that level, it's fine, but I just wanted to make sure that we didn't, well, we weren't imposing on the administration some sort of a burden. Well, now that you've named somebody.
There's no mandates.
No.
None.
This Education Department, our committee wanted to make sure we passed bills, no mandates.
No mandates.
Yeah, there's nothing that's egregious, as I would say.
I think one thing that would be helpful is, you know, they're trying to do things like, and, you know, it may not apply here, but there's other towns, for example, that really struggle, and maybe you do. I know some of my rural towns struggle with, you know, how do I transport my high-need student to where they need to get the services if it can't be placed in districts? So, you know, we're, SDE is, good luck, they're going to be busy. They're going to have to try to give examples of, you know, transportation contracts that are really, that work really well, so that you can use them as examples of what other districts that have had success are doing, so that they can share it with districts that may need that help. And that would be available on their website, those types of things, because everyone realizes in education that transportation is a huge, huge burden as far as finances, and especially when you have the high-need student that has to be transported someplace to get the services if it can't be provided in the district, so.
And to piggyback off my colleague's comments there, in SB 1, there is provision for SDE to look at designing routes for out-of-district services. So kind of minimize, doing it most efficiently, effectively, and making sure the services are still provided, so that's in SB 1 as well.
Any other questions? Ken?
So, in regards to, oh. Oh, my battery's dead.
Oh.
Here, it's okay, we're going to have to talk. In regards to like breakfast and lunches, are we making headway on that? Or can you comment on anything?
What do you, what do you think headway is?
I don't, um, right now, from my understanding, we're losing some funding, or funding is being reduced, and I don't know if there's any initiative to like restore funding, so that students who may or may not be able to afford breakfast, lunch, that we can help subsidize even.
You know, the budget, again, appropriations, we fully funded. You know, school, breakfast, and lunch, that was not in the budget. Breakfast is fully funded. I can't speak to where we're going to end up as far as lunch, as far as, you know, there's always students that need lunch, but before, we were paying for everybody if a certain percentage needed lunch. I don't think that is going to continue, partly because many of districts found that there was extreme waste in the program, because a lot of kids that didn't need the lunch brought their own lunch, and were just throwing the food away. We heard that repeatedly in, in the education hearings. So I can get back to you on exactly where we stand as far as the lunch portion. I know that breakfast was fully funded, but I can't say specifically where we're going to end up as far as the lunch portion.
So fortunately, Groton has had the community eligibility program for four schools, which was Stames River, Catherine Kolnowski, Mystic River, and Groton Middle. This year, we added on Fitch High School, but it was costing the district so much money that we're not able to do it next year. The problem with CEP is it's only based on SNAP benefits. And as you know, I brought this up with Dr. G about 10 years ago, our military kids have TRICARE, they don't get SNAP benefits. And so there's no way that Charles Barnum can be a CEP school just because they're military, mostly military. And I don't know what the governor could do. I mean, we do ask them to fill out their forms, so those kids who would get free and reduced lunch would get them, but the military is a very proud community, and sometimes there is one parent out to sea for seven months, and that might not be at the top of the list to get done. And so we have to support our families, and it's going to be tough, because what happens is we get really used to having free lunch and breakfast, and it keeps changing on us. And even at Northeast Academy, where they're more likely to be able to afford it, there are still bills that have gone unpaid, and we've done our due diligence, but we must provide meals to our kids, period, the end. And if the parents can pay, or will pay, they do, and sometimes they don't. So what was the, do you remember, Sam, what the final bill was? The outstanding?
No, no, I don't have the final number, I can get that for you.
Do you have an estimate? Is it $20,000? Is it $50,000?
Well, it was over $50,000 at one point.
I think that they've done, yeah. And there have been people who've actually contributed over the past several years to our fund to help support meals. But I think the larger problem is, if you have a CEP, it's very biased that it only, you know, SNAP benefits are only based on this healthcare, and if you don't need the healthcare, then you don't get the SNAP benefits. But you could still be in the same predicament of, you know, funding and like, you know.
Well, I can't, I can tell you how frustrating federally-supported programs are. They don't make sense, but you have to follow the rules. So, and you can't change the rules as much as you want. You know, you may have this, and it seems silly for heating assistance or food assistance, and, you know, they, they conflict, but we don't make those rules, and we have to follow them. The, you know, the thing that I can offer is, if you, if you know that you have this outstanding bill, or you are going to need $50,000, or whatever it is, to make sure that every child has food, which we all want children to be able to eat at school, then, you know, come to us individually, and, you know, I'm good at fundraising, I will help, I will commit to you that I will help raise funds for that. I will go to the community partners that we have and see what we can do to, to help make sure that, you know, we have those funds. I, you know, other towns that I represent do a ton of fundraising, whether it's for this sport or that sport, and they're very successful. We just need to know what the number is and what the mission is. And, you know, I think between the three of us, we'd be happy to help and try to help raise those funds.
We have a lot of contacts between the three of us.
I can say last year was an $80,000 bill, because Fitch was not part of it, and a big, you know, a big part of that was Fitch and the bills that were left behind. But when we put Fitch in as one of the CEP schools, it really came down the, you know, for us, so.
You know, and I can tell, we can only do what we can do within what we have to work with. You know, there's need across the state. But again, there is, there was, that was tracked, a lot of waste within the program. You know, there was a lot of, they can measure it by the garbage that is being thrown away by the organic, organic collection. So, and it's, it's a very large number for the state, as you can imagine, to feed every single student to, for breakfast and lunch. And, you know, there's some people in the legislature that don't feel that's a priority, or that it should be the parents' priority, other people don't feel that way. So that's always a battleground. The governor did not support that. He supported breakfast only. So we will, you know, what, we can only do what we can do within the confines of what we have, but we can offer to help in other ways. And that's one way that we can offer to help, is to, you know, push with fundraising. You know, I'm, I'm sure that there's corporations that are interested in helping that just need to know what to do, when to do it. So that's what we can offer.
Thank you.
Also, to piggyback on what we can offer, I, representing New London as well, I have New London schools and other organizations reaching out to me when they apply for grants, asking for letters of support. So anything you apply for, please reach out to the delegation, and we're happy to sign a letter. I'm happy, I'm happy to sign a letter.
We've got a couple of them coming up, and I think Shannon's going to be heading your way.
I'm happy to write a letter of support for that as well.
Yeah, so thank you. We will, definitely.
So just for clarification, so next year, we will have no CEP schools? It will be free lunch for families that qualify for free lunch and reduced lunch, if you qualify for reduced lunch?
No, we still have four. We still have
Oh, so we still will have funding to run.
We just, we, we lost Fitch, which was really a, that was a bonus, but it was costing the district a lot of money, and the, you know, and Ernie's program, so.
It was costing the district, or I thought it was fully funded for this year, for this year that we're finishing?
It was 68% funded, I think.
It was costing us.
Oh, it was?
Yes.
All right. And then I would love to hear from Ernie about waste in lunch, in general, that would be something I'd be interested in.
I haven't heard that's an issue here.
And I'm not saying, like, as I said before, I'm not saying that is this district, but overall, there was significant waste in the program. And it could have been, you know, schools that, you know, at one time during COVID, we were paying for breakfast and lunch for everybody. And, I'm sorry, this happens all day long. But, and then there's some schools that, you know, there's certain percentage, and then everybody gets free lunch, and there's a lot of waste in that. I'm not saying it's Groton, and I'm not saying it's my district, but in the state of Connecticut, so that's one thing that the governor looked at, and that's why he put breakfast only. In our appropriations budget, we tried to fully fund it, we funded, you know, the farm program, whatever we could, but that unfortunately was taken out of our budget. It was not in the final budget.
A concern I heard was that there were more affluent towns that had the ability to pay for it, and some did not, so there was some discrepancy there as well, and trying to figure that out, if that was a possible solution. And it just, you know, with the legislative deadline, sometimes deadlines happen, and we can't, you know, we'd try again next year, and also improve it next year if something needs to be fixed, so. Just something I think about.
And separately, going back to Alliance District, and maybe this is a little bit off-topic, but does, Groton obviously has a lot of non-taxable real estate where families live, you know, with the military. Does that fall into the, does that calculate with the Alliance funding? Do we get any credit for all of that? So we have a, so Groton has kind of a surplus of students compared to the, you know, the tax revenue, where people would normally be paying property taxes for houses and stuff, but that, there's no accommodation in the?
Are you asking me about, is it taken into account that we don't collect property tax from the military base? Is that what you're saying?
Well, Groton is, so we have something like 750 military students, many of them live in military housing, which I don't believe pays town taxes. So, so are, we have a little bit of an unusual burden in this So, so are, we have a little bit of an unusual burden in this town from the state. So I'm just wondering if there's any, any accommodation.
That has not been recognized. We've been, I've been working on that for 10 years. I think that there should be, um, a, not an Alliance District, but a Military District because we really are.
We are the Military District, the biggest.
Very different than anything else. And that's an argument that I have had to make with different reps since, for 10 years ago. The only way that we were able to, uh, when, when I took office, Malloy was going to cut you by $18 million. And it was going to be devastating because if you fit us into the calculation and you don't, you know, every, at that time, everybody was going to get cut. But, um, you know, we were taking a significant, a significant hit. And you were also going through a construction project that there was a $10 million mistake. It was just an absolute nightmare. Um, but. The, um, argument was this is military, you know, there's, at that time, the, it was about a $10 million, I called it a yoke around the, oh my God, I'm so sorry. Um, the taxpayers neck because of the amount of military students we had in our school that we weren't generating any, um, you know, property tax revenue, no tax towards their education. We do have people that are military that don't live in, in, in housing, right? Also, but we do get federal impact aid for those students. So if you had three students living in military housing and they're, I don't know what the impact aid is right now, but let, it was.
55%.
It was $2,400 or something. You know, you could make the argument that you were getting more in federal impact aid than you would on that house if you were going to tax it in property tax. So that was the argument that the state had at that point in time. Um, the only way that we were able to keep your funding was to make you an Alliance District. And we were able to make you an Alliance District because of Catherine Kolnowski and reading assistance at that point in time and, and truancy. Um, so, so far, you know, the history has been that there was, there's only supposed to be 30 Alliance Districts. Then it went to 33, now there's 36. Um, anybody who has been in Alliance District since they've been creative has not come off the list. Um, after five years, you're supposed to come off the list, which most of the people on that list would be eligible to come off the list, but no one wants to come off the list because then you lose your funding, right? So, and that's why there's a push to get rid of the Alliance Districts because other towns are saying, come on, you know, everybody else is losing money because they might be losing population, but these Alliance Districts are completely held harmless. That's unfair. So it's always, it's, it's always a dance, but being military has not been recognized the way it should be at all. Um, that's something that we argue, um, especially now that we have non-military living in military housing, that I, I think the town has developed some kind of arrangement, but at one point in time, they did not. So we were collecting absolutely zero on that. We had civilians living in military housing.
We get a little credit and impact aid for those people.
Yeah.
Living on, little.
Right. So I, I think that I could be wrong, but I thought the town had arranged some kind of memorandum of understanding to collect something. I could be wrong. I don't know if that's true or not, um, on the town side. Um, you know, they were looking to talk to Balfour Beatty to see if they would be able to contribute.
I think there was some sign.
I don't know where that is.
I wasn't on the council yet. It wasn't during my time on the council.
I was just gonna say, you were there that long.
Yeah, I know, but I.
So I don't know where that is. You know, other towns have, um, been successful in doing that, not in Connecticut, but in other states. So, um, that would be something I would suggest the town, town council should have been doing for years, trying to negotiate that.
We've got these Columbia class coming in and they're going to be rotating through 600 families all the way to 20, 30, 35. And, um, they, they, I know that they're going to prioritize Balfour Beatty for military. So as people start to leave, they're going to hold those in reserve for military families coming in.
So that's just a fight that we're going to continue to have. I mean, I'm, I know I have that fight every single year. So that's a fight that I'm continuing.
There is a way to legislate the right of a community to have pilots. Because if, I, my understanding of the Balfour Beatty is that it is, uh, functionally privately owned, but on paper, the government still remains titled to it, which, you know, keeps them from having to pay any taxes. And the solution in New York State was pilots and.
I don't, you mean pilot funding?
Payments in lieu of tax.
We have that in the state of Connecticut. We just, uh, the state just never pays what it's supposed to. We have pilot funding. Every town gets pilot funding. Groton gets pilot funding.
In, in New York, it's the, the people who manage these properties provide funding to the town in lieu of taxes. So it's not a state, well, maybe, I don't know enough about New York anymore, but it was not a state, a state burden at the time.
I mean, that's something that maybe we could look at. I don't know how that will go over. I thought that the town had entered into an arrangement. I can talk to John Bird.
I think they did.
Uh, you know, they may have, like, there are different institutions. I'm going to pick on Fairview, for example, that, um, is a nonprofit, but they do use services. So they have a understanding with the town of Groton and a contract. So they pay X amount of dollars to the town of Groton for, you know.
That would be, that's what my experience would be a pilot.
Right. And I think the town did enter one with, I think, I don't even know if it is still Balfour Beatty, but they entered into one with them. I don't know where that stands, but we could find out from John Bird. So I think the town is collecting some funds from that, um, uh, which, and if not, I can certainly talk to Sean and see if there's something that we can do. But, but I will say Groton gets, it may not feel like it to you all, but Groton gets a significant amount of funding from the state compared to other towns.
We are the.
Significant.
We are the most overfunded town.
In.
By EC, by ECS standards. Um, and I remember it was, you know, I, I went through this year, what Senator Summers has gone through the past 10 years of fighting that Alliance District fight with, in the, on the House side. So it was very, uh, 10:00 PM conversation that, where I was like, okay. Now I get it.
And yet a ton of the funds ECS have, have gone up. I mean, over the past several years, I mean, 10, 12, 15?
Most towns, a lot of towns have seen a decrease.
Decrease.
Yeah.
We've been getting 25 million since I can remember.
Yeah. Me too.
Probably since our budget was like $50 million and the state funded half of it.
Well, there's always a push for, um, fully funding education. Um, and it's a fight that is ha, has, you have it every year. And we are lucky, which doesn't mean I feel like that. We are lucky that we have been able to hold you harmless and keep you where you are because of the, the numbers. And if we followed the formula and there's a push to redo the formula, we would not be in that situation. And then the people of Groton would recognize how important it is to stay involved with politics and the community because their tax burden would be outrageous. So it is really, really important for all of them to pay attention and to, um, you know, see where we are, you know, what's happening in the town, what's happening with the Board of Education, what the state is doing so that they could see, you know, where money is being spent and where their tax dollars are being spent. There are towns, there are smaller towns that are very close to deciding to not take any money from the state of Connecticut anymore uh, because the burden that the state requires of them versus what they return, what they're going to return, it's just not worth it for them any longer. Um, a lot of that's happening in the Fairfield County area. Um, but there's towns that are, that I represent too, that are having that. You know, they're, they send an awful lot of money to Hartford and they get very, very little back and they get a lot of the, the burdens and the mandates. And if you don't take the state money, you're not required to necessarily comply with all the state mandates that are tied to that funding. Groton is not in that position. Um, but it's an argument every year on the pool of money for education. Um, there was a bill into fully funded education this year. I, the number was astronomical, um, as far as what it would cost.
Oh, I'm sure.
But, um, we, we do get that bill every year and we do fight for additional funding every year. And it goes in the appropriations budget and then it gets cut.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
I don't know if it's a question shared by my colleagues or not, so I don't want to represent it in that way. But we certainly don't know the date when these new crews are going to arrive, these new 600 families. But given that most of them are not officers, most of them are young people starting families with children, uh, we don't know precisely what the impact is going to be, but it is very likely we're going to have to either rehab or refurbish or get Mary Morrison back to come online as a school, if that's feasible. Uh, and/or replace it with a new school. And I'm wondering, you know, our circumstances being governed not by the usual demographic flow within a community, but this outside arrival, um, how, I just want to keep your ears up that when, when this need comes, not if, but when this need comes, we're probably going to need your help to convince whatever the funding authorities are that even though we just had a really large project, there can be a lot of kids here and need a place to go to school.
Even with the new apartments and new housing?
Even with the new apartments. I don't see a, you know, a young submarine are affording $2,400 for a studio apartment. That's, that's not going to work with them.
I think they pay that in Balfour Beatty already.
But that's not, that's not for a studio.
Well, I think one of the, the biggest things we should do is, um, you know, probably keeping better contact. And obviously, I know I've talked to you, um, you know, you can email or any of us or call us as, when you get closer, do we have an expectation within the next two years, the next year, the next six months? We are going to have an influx, I'm making this up, of 600 new families. But I don't know if, what the attrition rate is. Are we losing families? Are these 600 new additional families? Or are we, are some shipping out and some coming in? Like, what is the delta? What's the actual effect?
That's a great, that's a great question.
Because if we do need a new school, um, you know, we do still have our school construction programs that we've had. Um, those are still valid and active. We have those every year. You know, it, it depends on the financial state of, uh, the town and what your reimbursement is or what your, your match is from the state. Um, the state tried to move to giving you sort of three choices of schools to make it easier and more consistent so that it was easier through the process. Um, but I would beg, and I would put this on our federal delegation, if you're going to bring 600 new families to Eastern Connecticut, you better help find the money to house them and to, um, to school them. Because again, that burden, although I, I say burden, I don't mean complete burden, but that, it is a burden to the taxpayer of Groton. Um, and we, but we want the military to come. We want the students. We love the diversity. We, you know, it's, makes our community very unique, but there's a cost associated with that. And, you know, I think that our federal delegation has a very large role to play here and that they should be part of the conversation in finding what they can do to help alleviate some of the cost. Um, because we go through this cyclically, so we build new schools, then, you know, there's a change in the direction and we don't have as many. There's also potential BRAC on, on the, on the line here that I don't know if you guys have been made aware of, but there is talk of another BRAC. Now that could be devastating. Um, it would seem that that would be an absolute ridiculous move, you know, with everything that's going on with our new construction of submarines. But that is also something that is, um, you know, to keep on our radar, to watch that, to lobby against that. Um, you know, we, you know, if it's New England and Virginia with the dynamics of what's going on, that's something that we need to be very aware of. So I, I think that our, um, you know, the, the decision to bring those folks here is great and I think it's, you know, great for our community. But I also think that it's time that we put some pressure on our federal delegation to, to bring something home to us. You know, it can't just be the state of Connecticut, um, you know, educating and, and everything else with the, with the military decisions. And I think that's fair. If it was with Virginia, we would be doing that. So.
To piggyback off on the federal delegation, I checked today because I, I knew it wasn't fully funded, but only 55% of the impact aid we get is funded by the federal government. So really, we're only getting 50, for our impact aid dollars, we're only getting 55% of what we're entitled to. Um, so it's really, you know, imagine doubling your impacted money amount. That'd be a huge impact to, um, here in Groton. So it's very interesting to see how it goes. And, um, so I just wanted to put that tidbit in. And, you know, if you want to have conversations with our federal delegation, happy to connect you with their offices as well, so.
Thank you both so very much.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate this and the support.
Sure. Are we done? Do you have any more questions? If you have any more questions, again, if you go to the CGA website, this is probably the easiest way and you type in, it'll say bill number. You put in SV1 or 5001, the bill comes up, you click summary, you can read through everything in detail. Um, and if you have any questions on that summary, then we're happy to answer those.
One more highlight, because this was in HB 6442 and I worked with Superintendent Austin and Director Dolittle on this. Um, there was an education portion in there regarding military families. Um, it was to minis, it was to minimally disrupt the transition of military children who have an IEP or 504 plan. So within 30 school days, um, you are required to review that plan and then have a, uh, placement team meeting. Um, and then, so, but you guys do it within 10 days, so it really doesn't affect you. And then it also allows the student to finish the school year, which you guys also do. But the addition and the caveat is if you are in 11th grade, it also allows you to finish your senior year as well. So that was a caveat. So that was some.
You have a very generous district.
Yes.
It's always been this way, but it really is.
But now it's unstable. So just wanted to make you aware of that. And I appreciate the superintendent for her, um, partnership on working out those details.
Thank you.
So if you can get us that number on what you think you're going to be in the hopper for, for lunches?
Yeah, I'll talk to the captain.
And then what you think.
Oh, that, yeah.
Estimate is for next year.
I'll talk to Ernie about that.
You know, we can snoop around and see what we can do for, if there is any possibility of additional funding. Sometimes we can get creative. Or if not, what we can do to help close that gap for you. I'm happy to do that.
All right, well, thank you both.
All right, thanks for having us.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right. So, um, next item on the agenda is comments from citizens, agenda items and other subjects of concern that lie within the jurisdiction of the Board of Education. This is the portion of the agenda where board, where the board welcomes comments from citizens. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentations should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Board members will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and cannot respond during the comments of citizens portion of the board meeting. Citizens should make their presentation from the podium and state their name and address for the record. All right. So David Good? Did I say it right? Is it pronounced? All right.
Good, it's good.
Dave Good, Fort Tompkins Street in Groton. Um, also, I am a representative for the 4th District in the RTM. Um, I just wanted to come and say thank you to the board for considering using the property, back property on Mary Morrison. I know you have some questions about, about using it, but, um, I appreciate you taking it up. And I hope that, you know, I know, I, I know you, you want a lot of questions answered, but I, I hope my son, who's in eighth grade now, will be able to enjoy that park with his friends. Um, just going back, you know, 10 years is, goes quickly in, uh, in, in Groton sometime self. It's there, it's ready. I, I moved here in 1972, '73. I went to Charles Barnum. My son went to Charles Barnum. My grandson went to Charles Barnum. And in 1973, I was playing in that field. It's exactly the same back there. Hasn't been used in 50 years. So I, I just think there's an opportunity. We all know what, um, shape the 4th District is in for parks. It's there, it's ready, well-maintained, I might add. Um, we also have, and just thinking about the kids in our area, we, uh, we have, um, you know, the Super 8 Hotel, we have other hotels and there's a, there's a lot of kids living in those places that have nowhere.
Yeah.
Super 8 can walk on sidewalks to Mary Morrison, just to let you know. You know, those kids could be using that this summer if, you know, for next year. But that's all. Again, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sam, for recommending it.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
That's it, that's good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Great response to comments from Board members. Someone? All right.
Thanks for coming out.
Well, it is on the top of our agenda to talk about, so we appreciate you. Not today, but we are-
Not today, but we are definitely-
It's coming up, it's coming up soon.
We think it's a win-win.
All right, Student Representative Report.
No students there, all vacation.
All right.
Graduated.
Graduated, yeah.
Superintendent and Administration.
All right, so I'm going to ask Ben and Chelsea and Shannon to come up and maybe find a microphone or however you want to do it so that you can be part of this group, maybe sit by Sam and-
I'll probably fix it.
I think they have two right there. Shannon maybe can come up.
Can I share screen?
Oh, he fixed it. You may.
Thank you.
So this is about career pathways in the Manufacturing Center with EB Partnership. You received a PowerPoint show and they're going to walk us through some of the things that have been accomplished in the past couple of years. Chelsea really came to us as a career pathway coordinator through the Congressman Courtney Grant a couple of years ago, and she has her, in her role at Fitch as the Department Chair of Counseling and also continues through one of the grants to spearhead some of these pathways. And Shannon in her role as Grants Coordinator, who continues to be so involved in some of these initiatives as we're implementing and we're seeking more money and more grants to fulfill. And then Ben, in his K-5 work, it really, it corresponds and aligns with the 612 and he's just been instrumental in bringing so much to our district and couldn't thank him enough. But this is really an exciting project for me and my heart is in it and I want to see it grow and I want opportunities for our children to find their pathway, to find their, be in their element, to find out what they're good at and what they love to do. And maybe it's a few things and few careers in a lifetime, as Dean has suggested, in his own pathway. So it might not just be one thing. So I'm going to let you take the floor now and talk to us a little bit about where we are with this.
All right. Do I have to do anything to make this live or am I?
You're live.
I'm live, okay. All right. Well, good evening, everybody. Nice to see everybody. We're going to share a little bit of information with you tonight about the Career Pathways Program here in Groton Public Schools and then happy to answer any questions at the end. We wanted to start the conversation by just framing this as, you know, we've been working on a career pathway initiative here in Groton for a while, but this is really a national initiative that districts and schools all over the country are working on. Recent articles in the Wall Street Journal, the New York Times, Middletown Press have all highlighted the need for more direct-to-career options for high school students. Back in March, we had CBS News come to Groton, they highlighted partnerships that Electric Boat has with schools here in Groton. It featured some of our 5th graders from Charles Barnum, and that story really highlighted a couple of facts. One, the importance of these initiatives for things like national security and economic security, but it also highlighted the need for these programs for kids and to make sure that we're providing multiple pathways for students to succeed when they graduate from high school. So a couple of facts to kind of back that up. And a lot of these statistics came from Connecticut Department of Labor. I went to a great conference back in the fall called Performance Matters that's in a workshop on initiatives like this, but at that workshop they shared only 40% of jobs in Connecticut require a four-year degree, and that tracks pretty much nationally, I think nationally maybe a little bit higher, give or take depending on your source, but 40% of jobs in Connecticut. But 70% of jobs here in Connecticut require some sort of education post-secondary, whether that's four-year degree or a two-year degree or even a certificate program. And that workshop that I was at really highlighted that, that's the sweet spot for a lot of these career pathway programs, is designing programs that give kids a boost that they can then go right to career or then take the skills that they've learned and grow them. And a couple of examples of that. Machinist at Electric Boat, so starting salary right now about $50,000, with the opportunity to add additional skills and grow that income. A CNA can work right out of high school, but with two years of additional schooling can raise that income level to around $80,000. Similar with EMTs, EMTs, you know, with that certification can work right out of high school, but with additional certifications and training can elevate that income. Now compare that with, you know, we've all seen stories about student loan debt and as a father of a high school student, like student loans are, and the expense of college are on the mind, but average student loan debt over $36,000 and growing. Couple that with generational hiring that's happening at Electric Boat, you know, we've had lots of conversations with them, they've developed programming for elementary kids, which we've been taking advantage of, and they're always willing to share, like, that's because they're projecting out that far, you know. They want to get elementary kids excited because they're still expecting to hire when those kids graduate. So the other kind of like big takeaway for me at that conference was this idea of a comprehensive high school, and I think that's what we've got here at Fitch, that idea that we develop pathways, multiple pathways for kids to succeed after high school. So I'm going to turn it over to Chelsea, she's going to share a little bit about what that looks like. Back to Fitch.
All right, good evening, everyone. So I'm here, it's funny because I was thinking back, I actually presented about a year and a half or so ago about, you know, the initial phases of the career pathways that we were kind of, I'm going to say not creating as a new because we've had some career clusters that Fitch has been doing for years, but we were looking to enhance and expand some of these things for the kids. So that's where we're at. But currently, what do the career pathways look like for us at Groton Public Schools and specifically Fitch? Again, it's to enhance and expand the options for our students and those opportunities. We took what was in existence before, which were like 12 career clusters that not only nationally were recognized, but the state recognized, and consolidated that to four. And the reason for four was just to sort of make it a little bit more streamlined, we didn't eliminate anything, we just sort of took those 12, we made the four, and then we established some pathways that would fall underneath, which some other slides, as you have seen, will showcase that. So the four clusters are Arts, Business and Communication, our Health Sciences, Human Services, Manufacturing, Architecture and Engineering. And so that's what we have. So if we go to the next slide, this just shows you now what we've been able to create over the last couple of years too, with the help of Rebecca Bayes, is some of our kind of marketing at the high school, is we have some banners and folders and flyers and things, but this is just to showcase what we specifically are doing, is we have the Arts, Business, Communication. Our more established pathways in this area, I would say right now are probably like the Finance and the Marketing, because our business program is a little stronger at this point, but when we include here like Digital Communication, Information and Technology and Journalism Broadcasting, it's because we took all of the courses that we offer at Fitch High School and they basically fall under various categories and we're able to say like if so many fell within a certain range for the students, we could create a pathway in that area that we could say, all right, but then we build on it and create opportunities for extracurricular activities, we partner with industries. And so until we have those stronger, I would say that the stronger ones we have are like the Finance, Marketing, because we do have some connections with local businesses in that area. So just, I'm sorry, too, just to back up for a second to make sure I'm clarifying why I'm saying that. When you have a true pathway, your pathway consists of not just the courses that we can say align with someone's career interest area, it's also the fact that we can say we have an established partnership with maybe one business or multiple businesses because part of enhancing that experience for students is how do we curate, you know, their opportunities outside the classroom and extend their learning outside of the classroom. So while we can create their courses and then, and develop a planner, we also highlight things for them that allow them to really explore more. Whether they stick with it or not, that's okay, because we know everyone can change their minds, but I just want you to understand what really makes it a true pathway, that it's beyond the courses, yes, that's integral, but it's also enhancing those opportunities for our kids when they're outside of the building. So Ben, you can go to the next slide, I just wanted to clarify that. So the next cluster area is our Health Sciences, so we have our EMT program, which we were able to bring to Fitch. This was our second full year with the Emergency Medical Technician Program, so we'll go into our third. We continue to build and increase our Nursing, our CNA program, it's very strong.
It doubled this year.
It did double.
We had to turn away kids.
Yeah, which I guess is not, is a good problem, but you know, it's good, we like where it's going. And then this coming fall, we are going to have a Sports Science, which would be, that'll be new, so we'll see how that one goes. Next is Human Services, so under this pathway, or under this cluster rather, the pathways would be Hospitality and Tourism, which for us at Fitch right now is sort of our growing culinary program more so, and then we hope to expand that. We've included Government and Public Administration, but again, that's a pathway that I would not say is as established just yet. Education and Training, this one is for our students that are currently looking to pursue education in some capacity, so we've built up our Ed Rising classes, they also, they have opportunities for dual enrollment with that, I should say, the Nursing is doing the same thing. And then, of course, we have our Military Science Program, we are now going into year three with our NJROTC program, so students, we've been continuing on that path very, very well. And then lastly, is our Architecture, Engineering and Manufacturing. This area is one that I think we can say, we definitely have a very strong engineering program with our Project Lead the Way classes. We are continuing to build up the manufacturing, I think that's one of the things that we're really working hard on right now, and the architecture is one that we keep there because there are some students that if they want that, we can try to build it for them because we have some components of it with some classes. So then, just to go into it a little further, some program highlights. So as I said, it consists of a variety of specialty courses, so it's their core required coursework, elective options or offerings, and then we look at that to really help prepare all our students for whatever their path may be after high school. So we like to say, yes, you know, it's college, but it's college and career, so if there are students that, you know, they're not really sure college is the first step, we want to make sure they have a step and that we're preparing them for that. So one of the things we've been saying, or I've been saying for the last couple of years is it's purposeful and meaningful alignment of our courses and all those extracurricular activities to really align to their post-secondary college and career options. We want to continue and we have, we've grown the opportunities for advanced placement and dual enrollment credits. We continue to build and maintain, well, maintain and build our career connections, activities, including job shadowing, some internships, bringing in guest speakers, industry panels, et cetera. So we work in our Counseling Department very closely with our College Career Counselor and she has a lot of connections and that helps to complement a lot of these things. And then just for your enjoyment, I included a couple testimonials at the bottom there of, you know, last summer we had a couple interns at Mystic Seaport and it went really well, so I wanted to highlight that. Barbara was one of the supervisors of our kids there and I was able to look back and find in her email after she provided an evaluation, you know, what a joy it was to work with those two women that summer. Boat for Next Gen Participant, I'm really happy with our ongoing partnership with Electric Boat, they've been extremely supportive of us and accommodating when it comes to their getting our kids to participate in the program, and the reason I'm explaining that is typically the Boat for Next Gen is a program that operates over like six weeks, like the sessions are like three to six at night, but they've allowed us to do a hybrid version where we've had kids go as a field trip during the day and then do some of the evening ones because we couldn't always, especially whether it was a transportation or substitute issue or something, we've worked with us to allow our kids to still have a true program experience. But I had a student just this past winter who, he kind of was a last minute like, I want to go, and we made sure he could go and he just said, you know, he didn't realize that he would even like welding, not even knowing what it was, but he was really excited about it. And then at the bottom there, a student was talking about their experience going to some of our elementary schools and our middle school as part of, you know, their course experience, and they really enjoyed it and now they actually think, you know, while they weren't sure about education, they could see themselves really pursuing it, just having the experience in the classroom. So I thought those would be some good things to include. Moving on, so our program implementation, the middle and high school course selection process, we incorporate the career connected learning and exploration, so we try to, or we have been, having students begin at the beginning of their eighth grade year. So what that typically looks like is a combination of the students coming to the high school for what we would call like a tour and, you know, maybe some classroom visits that are very targeted to different areas, so kids get a feel for not only, you know, some of our typical academic classes, but some of the trade area, not trade, but like our CTE classes and the arts and the music and everything, so they get a broad, some broad exposure. So we like them to see the kids in action at the high school and then we also do an expo, and then there's a parent night that includes a lot of the same stuff, but in a similar or a different format because we don't have classes going on. But it's to really provide that information and exposure well in advance of their course selection, which then comes up maybe in February. So additional opportunities, just to give you a rundown of, you know, kind of throughout the year, taking from fall to spring, is, you know, there's the open house, so we're trying to include more opportunities for our pathways to be-
Showcased.
Showcase, thank you, that's a good word, Warren. At not just nights for the pathways, but also the nights that we know we have, we have an audience, right? So it's going to be the open house, it's going to be the parent conferences. The middle school works very closely with us as well and allows for things to happen at some of their events so that it's like you're still seeing it in that capacity and it's not just isolated to the high school. As I mentioned, the expo, so there's the during the school day and then there's the evening component, presentations at the middle school, and then we have, we have the nursing students, the EMT, NJROTC and the education, we've had students that have been able to actually come to the middle school and speak to kids, as well as the kids coming up and visiting those specific areas because, as I said, some of these are more established pathways. We do our freshman orientation and so we are structuring it a little bit differently this year, where in the past we've done some presentations to the freshmen, the counselors that is, and we go over all of this stuff in addition to many other things, but this year we're actually going to target this a little bit differently in terms of counselors are going to meet, we are going to meet with our respective caseload of freshmen and really talk about the pathway program, but also course selection and understanding this, you know, their schedule with course planners. So we want them to really have a better sense of like what their four years could look like, knowing that that can change. Nobody's locked into something, it's just more of how do we shape this so that it really makes sense for them individually? And just how we, and what our role is throughout that process. We, as high school counselors, visit the Groton Middle School classrooms, we continue to inform and support students throughout their course selection process, so we go into a little bit more detail sometimes about the program of studies with their elective options, and then again, like I said, aligning those to if they have some ideas of their areas of interest. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we have some new educational and outreach materials for staff, parents and students, and so we will be distributing them if they, you know, if they didn't already receive some, and then we will continue to have those available. This past year, we did a career exploration event at Groton Middle School, which was very successful. We have some pictures in here later on if you haven't already seen them.
I think I wrote about it in Board Notes, a lot of these things too.
Yep, and so that was, I think, a big success and allowed some, we actually had our high school students come down as well and they were set up so that each career cluster area was represented, each pathway area was represented, whether it was from, you know, we were very, I think, specific with that in terms of the partners we had and tried to balance it out. So, and then we also do at the high school some presentations in the classrooms with the students. Previously that was done en avance in terms of like they would go in, we'd talk about the clusters and the pathways and then they go in and do some interest inventories and surveys, which help us to, you know, once they complete them, we look over the results and then we kind of help them to see like, does this sound like you, does this make sense to you, does this surprise you, you know, and kind of continue that conversation as we go along and help them, you know, select classes for the next year.
And I think we're looking at a new software that might have opportunities, elementary, middle school and high school.
Yeah.
So through one of the grants.
Yes.
We're investigating.
This next slide, we, I just wanted to kind of showcase for you some of the internship success and experiential learning that has occurred at Fitch High School. So in these pictures, you can see some of our CNA students actively working in their classrooms. There's also some pictures in the center there, which were our students that were actually over at the Three Rivers Mac Center at Grasso, as well as the Western Education Center. They, it's really neat to see them in action doing these things, but those are some pictures there. And then the top right is a picture of our EMT- And then the top right is a picture of our EMT students when they did sort of a mock accident ahead of proms last year. And it was, it was pretty impactful. And it was our, and because it was at the end of our first full year of, of EMT implementation, it was kind of an exciting way to, you know, kind of bring some of our other partners together. And then at the bottom there, the CNA students recently went to an elementary school and presented to the kids in the class. And I have to say, I was able to be there, and the fifth graders were very much engaged and had a lot of good questions. And it was, it was nice to see. So we have some students doing some really good things.
And, you know, there's a lot of literature about, out there about these types of initiatives need to be K-12. That career conversations and exploration can't just start in high school. So in elementary and in middle, we've been defining college and career readiness as students being aware of their strengths, being aware of their interests, and beginning to get some information about the types of careers that are out there in their communities. Just kind of anecdotally, like students I talk to, like, most students identify with the careers of their parents or, or their family members. So I feel like it's really important for us to provide awareness of a wide variety of things that they, they can do with their life, starting at an early age. Our magnet programs at elementary school really play a role in this, both because kids can leverage the things they're already interested in. If they've chosen a magnet program because of the theme to grow their academics. But a lot of our magnet programs and the community partner work we do at magnet programs really lend themselves to kids developing, there's a bunch of names for it, but we state called it now Universal Skills. It's been called by four Cs or 21st century skills, tons, tons of names. But things like working together as a team, problem solving, being creative, communicating. And, and yeah, and like Chelsea said, you know, really providing opportunities for our kids to learn about different careers. A couple of examples of that, so we've, we have this great partnership at the elementary level with Electric Boat. They've developed a program to introduce elementary kids to different jobs in the trades, things like ship fitting, welding, being an electrician. We started implementing this at a couple of our elementary schools a few years ago, and we've steadily grown it. So I think this year, we had 200 fifth graders get exposed to those different types of careers. We've got good partnerships with Pfizer. They've been coming to our elementary schools and doing some in-school programming. And then this year, they reached out, they did this amazing mobile exhibit called the Pfizer School of Science. Our fifth graders from Katherine Kolmaske were able to go down there and learn a little bit more about careers in, in the health science. Another new partnership for us this year was partnering with Junior Achievement. They're really active in other parts of the state, but they've recently partnered with Electric Boat and are working with them on the Maritime Industrial Base Pipeline. We held a great event called JA in a Day at Charles Barnum, all focused around things like creating a business, entrepreneurship, fiscal literacy. So really kind of a nice fit with, you know, that arts/business pathway that we have opportunities for kids at high school. Chelsea mentioned CNA students coming down to Northeast Academy. That's something we want to do more of this year, is bringing our students down. A lot of times, they're the best promoters of some of these programs, so we want to, we want to continue to grow that. Chelsea also mentioned that Career Exploration Expo. We had a Groton Middle School. It was fantastic. Twenty-five community partners, all sorted by our career clusters at the high school. We actually had data from the previous year that not all of our eighth graders had done any career exploration. And it was that data that led to us bringing that event to the middle school. And now we know for sure that all eighth graders have at least done some career exploration because they were all at that event. And the last one I'll highlight, we were able to bring the Mobile Manufacturing Lab to GMS. It was a big hit. They were there for two days, introduced kids to these careers in manufacturing. Over 170 kids participated in that. So these are some of the newer things we've been doing to help build that career awareness in K-3.
And just this last slide was just sort of, you know, to, to showcase for you the partnerships we have. So these were some of the ones that were set up at that, that career exploration event we had. It was just really neat to be there at that day and look down from that grand staircase in, in GMS and just see how many people came and showed up for our kids and for us. And, and we're thrilled and, and want to come back, you know? And I think that that really spilt volumes, so I thought it was a nice way to end the presentation because this to me is like, we're just getting started. And I know with the team that I feel I've been working with, like, we have, we have a lot that we want to continue to do. So it's been good.
Well, and I know that last week was exciting because we did have our partners from EB along with the CTE coordinator from Coventry, who designed, in Coventry with the partnership at EB, an amazing manufacturing center that is very similar to what we are aspiring to do. And she was down, I think you said you got goosebumps hearing about it. But it is, it's very exciting work. And I don't know, Ben, you were there too. I don't know if you wanted to say anything about that, but we're really looking at, you know, a comprehensive plan that'll take us this year to, to do. And we do have funding from the CIP to get it started and planning for it and cleaning it out and getting ready for it. And then I think you were hearing from them about the different grants that they can help shepherd us through to, in order to do this project.
Yeah. We talked with EB a lot about how, you know, in, in the K-8 area, we're, we're building the, the pipeline, the interest in a lot of these opportunities at the same time that that program is building and growing at the high school. So that opportunity to partner with your friends from Coventry and Electric Boat to really create a neat advanced manufacturing space at the high school is, is super exciting.
And EB is very excited because they don't have any place like this. You know, they do at Grasso and with Three Rivers, but they don't have the machining. And this is something that we're really interested in, and our robotics team can use too. So we could have courses during the day with robotics. So.
Questions?
Dean?
So it's more of a comment than a question. It is a comment. I have heard of, and I've seen the debate between what schools in general ought to be teaching kids? What is the purpose of education? I can think of a number of examples where there's been, I've seen the tussle historically between people who felt that education should be very general and people who thought education should be vocational. Back in the old days, there was no vocational school. Dad was a farmer, that's what you did, right? You could see it. Or dad was a tanner, you know, mom was a whatever, that's what you did. And people who went to university, well, they went to study theology, philosophy, whatever. They're going to teach their useless things, right? Perhaps statecraft if you're a princeling of some sort. In any event. We move forward in time, and we have institutions like Yale, like Harvard, for example, which are teaching humanities, generally humanities courses. They're not considered vocational schools at all. There is no school of engineering specifically at these older institutions. Along comes the school that would become UConn. It was started as an agricultural school. And if you read the history of UConn, you can see presidents coming in saying, "You know what? We should offer humanities courses." And the state resisting saying, "We set you up to teach people about how to farm better. And now that we admit women in 19 or whatever that was," essentially it was glorified home ec, okay? If you want to do philosophy and, and all that stuff, you go to Yale. That's what we have Yale for. I keep pointing at you. I don't know why I do that.
You can point, you can point to me for UConn too.
So it was, it was with a lot of, it was with a lot of hemming and hawing that the, that the school eventually was able to, allowed to adopt a humanities course. Give you another vignette. I had a very good friend in high school who believed that colleges, this is a little bit extreme, colleges should not be in the business of, of, of preparing people for vocations. I mean, I would have to differ. I think there ought to be a school of engineering and a school of nursing, right? However, he thought you go to college to get an education. Now, what would an education look like? You'd have to go back to the quadrivium and the Middle Ages or anything like that. It would be humanities. But now what you see is, you see people saying, "My major is, you know, I'm pre-med. I can't wait to get the gen ed courses out of the way." Well, the gen ed courses are the so-called humanities courses. But unless you're a humanities major, everybody else is trying to get the gen ed courses out of the way. And I love this idea. My caution is that we, that we not forget what we're supposed to be doing because we rarely, we rarely express it, which is to generally educate children. Because you've got them from pre-K to 12. And yeah, if they show tendencies, proclivities, talents, by all means cultivate them. Interest, provide them with the pathways. It's all wonderful. I don't want us to become another vocational system. You know, we want the kids to be prepared when they leave school, but we also don't want them so narrowly educated that we really haven't educated them at all. I don't know where to strike the balance. I want to, I just want to make sure we're not so tempted into this that we forget to actually...
Well, I think when you look at the policy on graduation requirements, you see the core instruction is alive and well because that is absolutely the, you know, the skeletal that, you know, we bring to the table of what's required in the disciplines.
Yeah, I don't expect high school students to walk out, you know, having read Thomas Aquinas, but I would prefer if they'd heard of Thomas Aquinas. But I mean, I've quizzed my own kids and asked them, you know, have you, of course, nobody remembers anything. Have you at least heard of? And there are giant gaps. Now, a lot of it has to do with them. Frankly, we should all be self-educating. That's the way it ought to be. You know, the school, the grade schools are not the beginning of the end, not the Alpha and Omega. You got to learn yourself, and if you don't, well, that's on you. But I've always been struck by this, by what my friends said. You're going to college to get an education. Not to, not to, if you want vocational training, you get it when you get on the job. Again, easier because he was, his father wasn't banking, so he could afford to major in history. And to go work at a bank, they're going to teach him everything he knew there. I was going to be an engineer. That's what I did. I had to go to engineering school. That's my one caution, that we don't fall into, you know, we, we're, we've, we've given kids all these wonderful experiences and connections with the outside world and given them options, that we don't silo the kids inadvertently. I know we have the core curriculum. Just make sure we don't silo kids inadvertently. Because we never actually express, you know, this is what we want. We, we're very big on critical thinking. We've been talking about this for years. Teaching kids how to critically think. Okay, that's how to think. How often do we actually tell kids what to ponder, what to think about? I think that's a no by the way a lot of times, but that's just my, my personal observation. And again, that is just a caution to make sure we don't become, you know, a mini VoAg or mini VoTech, that we remain general.
Yeah, yes, go ahead.
I have a lot of thoughts, but what I want to say is, I think that this presentation is only a snapshot. So when I say that, I want you to understand, the group to understand. This is just to, to show that like we, we value the whole child, right? So we want to make sure that while we're providing that education, we're also giving them experience to complement the education. So I don't think it's going to be replacing something. I think that what I've seen in my only 20 years of doing this, this stuff is that there've been a lot of students who have missed opportunities because of not really being sure what direction to go. And, and there could be many reasons contributing to that. But what I'm saying is, I think that by providing more outside of the classroom because it's accessible and we, we are making it accessible, we're only enhancing and making it more meaningful what they're doing in those classrooms. Because we have kids who, you know, they're going to flourish academically because they're strong and they enjoy it. And we have those who like, they're, they're good at it, and they think, "Oh yeah, I'll do this," but they don't enjoy it. But what do we, how do we make meaning out of their school day every day? Because we have kids that don't come to school because they're like, "Why am I here? What am I doing?" I'm not saying that's the majority, but it's a, it's a good chunk of kids sometimes. And I see it at the high school where it's like, we're losing some when we just, and I'm not saying this is the answer, but I definitely think it's something that helps because when kids feel like they have a purpose that's just, you know, okay, they don't like math, but they're strong in English, right? We know that kids have strengths and weaknesses. I think we have to help them to understand that that's okay, and how do we build off those strengths and help them feel okay with those weaknesses? And to figure stuff out along the way. It's not to take away from what's being done in those classrooms because what I didn't highlight here and what I was trying to explain is though, the, the academic component is a core component, but we need to make sure we're meeting them to where they are outside of all of that too. And I think it makes them better once they leave our doors, you know, at the end of 12th grade. You know what I mean? Because I, I, I just think that like, pendulum keeps shifting, right? And, and I think this is a direction that like, we're not, it's not unique to us. I think we're actually a little behind, but like, we're trying, you know? And I just see that we have a lot of kids that would benefit from more opportunity that would make them feel better about what they're doing in the classroom.
Oh, and I'd be the first one to say that college frankly is overrated. It's been, it's been a big post-war, World War II, it's been a big post-war push between GI bills, just general societal push to, you know, get more and more people into college. There was a time when maybe 5% of the, you know, high school, of the grade, grade school population actually went to college. It wasn't for most kids. But now there's been a huge, huge, huge push. Now we're getting to the point financially where we're wondering whether, whether it makes any sense to go. So I applaud this. I applaud, you know, it's not like, well, you know, I'm not going to go to college. I'll just do what dad does. Well, dad might not be a tanner or, you know, or, or a farmer or anything like that. I had no idea what my dad did. It was all, seemed to be, you know, yellow legal pads. He was a salesman. I couldn't grasp what my father did, so I never thought, "I want to do what dad does." I had no idea what he did. It wasn't, it wasn't tangible. So I actually like things like this. Again, I just don't want to, you know, want to make sure we don't forget that we're here to generally educate the kids and just prepare them as much as possible. But, you know, thucydides is not a bad thing.
All right. Jen? My pitch.
Several comments. Going to try to put them in order. It may not come out that way. First of all, I want to say thank you, right? I feel like this is good exposure because our community is diverse and not all students are exposed to certain career paths. So you only know, and I can't remember who said it, you only know what you know, right? So if your parent is this, you may think like, that may be the only opportunity available. So creating exposure or finding that you have a talent and then, "Oh, I'm good at whatever, writing. I have various opportunities regards to writing." So in that aspect, yes, love it. I can tell you, now I'm really showing my age, right? Junior Achievement was in the district because I participated in Junior Achievement. Pfizer came in like for a period of like a semester, like in our social studies class. Still remember the name of the Pfizer executive who came. That led me into Junior Achievement at my old company. And it was a district in Hartford, and we would, used to go in and also meet with the kids there. The impact those kids learning, it's in JA, I don't know, because it was only a day. They own little businesses. They get these exposures. So they're learning math. But it's through like, "Oh, I own a little business. I sold a cookie." It's not real cookies, you know, they're fake cookies, whatever. But it gave these kids like, and you work with them from kindergarten to, we were volunteering in a middle school. So up to like fifth or sixth grade, I don't recall in that district. So seeing that Junior Achievement is back here, that's great. I was part of the CNA program. Ancient history. So that program is really strong. Mrs. Miller, who's the nurse who like started, I don't know if she started this program, you know, like getting that exposure of like, "Oh, now I know how to save someone's life" because you got certified and being able to volunteer at like local nursing. You know, it just gives students an opportunity to be like, "Oh yeah, like there is not just CNA, but the next level of nursing or even doctor or science, whatever." It just gives them an opportunity for STEM. So that's all the positives, right? And the only thing, and you guys, if you watched the videos, will know, sometimes, yes, we have, thank you for narrowing it down from 12 to four. But sometimes like, if, give me your feedback on the assessment of the pathway, sometimes you'll hear me saying less is more. So like, you'd mentioned the EMT one's really good, the business one's really good. So do you have an opinion of let's make those specific... do you have an opinion of, let's make those specific career paths where we're already strong, make it stronger, so that all these kids can expose, rather than doing like, five in arts and businesses, and maybe some of them aren't as strong? I know there's a, it's like, yes, we want to do everything, but unfortunately, our funding is finite, right? So in my biased opinion, and like, convince me, because I sit here and I say, less is more, but I do want all the other kids to have exposure to these other things. So that's my question at the end.
Do I take that, or I?
So I want to make sure I understand the question. So you're saying, rather than include on there the ones that are not as established, just keep the ones that are?
And grow it, to make it stronger, so that we can have, let's say, business, right? You have used that one as an example, that we, so maybe we go that finance and marketing, and maybe we make it stronger, and like, we have business affiliates with some of the local banks, and then they can go into tellers, or whatever it may be.
So ironically, we actually, that is what we're doing. So for the purposes of the presentation, those other ones were included, because when we have students complete that survey I mentioned earlier, you know, they obviously are going to come out with answers that are areas that maybe aren't even covered in what I've already showed, right? So it was just, there was two thought processes there. Like, we have, we want students to feel like there are options, right? And that they're not isolated to like, we have these, so that means you have to pick those. But either way, we still have to explain it to the kids that like, you may not fall under any of these right now, right? So that's okay. But we are moving in that direction, where the ones that are the most established, we are focusing on those, and they are the ones that, that we have maybe stronger business partnerships with. Like, the business area we have with, you know, Charter Oak Bank.
Right, in the high school.
Have students that do the internships, the bank is in the school, our business department works very closely with us on that and with these, those individuals. So like that, I would say, we're kind of doing that already. And I think that you're absolutely right, we want kids to see the ones that are the most established and grow them. If, if kids know that they're there, I think they'll participate. I just think that initially, it was to include some of the ones we felt we could, we could say we have, but just not without all the business partnerships yet. Because like I said, we really took all the courses we offer, and, and this was back a while, a long time ago, one of the counselors, she actually did that initially with the career clusters, so it's sort of like, been working off of all of that. But I would agree that, you know, less is more.
And kind of slow and steady, like, not to go too fast, but to grow it and to grow it well.
Well, I think the other thing is, that when, when you talk to kids about the 12 clusters, that was overwhelming. So even to try and, you know, just, just really quick to go back a little bit, the reason it even came to being like, the four, was I was, when I first went on as like, the pathways coordinator, I went to other schools in the areas, in different districts, to kind of see what they were doing. And that's what they were doing, is they were, you know, they were creating it and making it work for them. But some of the ones that seemed to be the most successful in there, where they were at in this journey, was like, they had consolidated those clusters. Because kids, that's overwhelming, you know? Because if you look at an initial list of, you know, 12 to 15, that's a lot.
Yes.
That's a lot.
Yeah.
So it doesn't mean they're not all important, but it's just, it's a lot.
It is a lot, yeah. Where I was coming from is like, the concern that we may not have the staff, right, to be or adequately support all of these pathways. And so then somebody may start, let's say, digital communication, and then, let's say, funding reasons, we no longer are able to support that until like, completion in high school. So that's my concern, is that we needed to make, you know, to make sure that it's going to be able to be sustained. That's where I'm concerned.
And I think that would come into play when we have conversations with students, if they, if they found that there's a path that they're interested in, and let's say it's not even listed for us, right? We, it doesn't mean, to me, it's not that we would say, well, that's not going to be realistic, it's just more of, what can we do within the confines of what we have?
Right.
And then how do we help you build capacity outside of that, that we just know, right now, we can't? Because if that's something they're just genuinely interested in, at least in that moment, well, let's, let's see what we can do, and just know that we'll take it year by year.
Yeah.
See, you know, where we can go with that. But yeah, I can understand that.
I think you want to have enough on there and offering to attract as many kids as you can. It makes me think about, we did a survey after that GMS Career Expo, and asked kids, like, what were your top two companies or industries, you know, that you, and it was every single combination you could imagine. There was no trend whatsoever.
Yes.
And it just made me really, it kind of reinforces that point, like, kids are just so different, and people have so many interests, and, so I think to your point, like, they have been narrowed down, but you still need it to be, need a variety.
Yeah. I could tell you, when I was a big girl, I had no clue what I wanted, you know? So I could probably see somebody in like, one pathway and another pathway, it's like, whoa, what were they seeing?
Well, and I know another concern that's been brought up, you know, ever since this all started, was like, you know, what if students don't know? And it's like, that's, that's fine.
Yeah.
I think it's more of like, in case they do, right now, right? Then let's try to make this completely valuable experience for them in school.
Okay.
But, you know, they'll go to college and they could change their mind then too.
Who knows? Yeah. No, thank you.
Thanks for the work.
I'm going to go, and then Matthew and Mike. So I just wanted to say thank you for what you're doing here. This is great. You know, you know, if we go back a little ways, when I graduated high school, you know, I was good at math, I like trains, so I just went into engineering, right? But, but I really had no, like, exposure to anything, and, you know, I graduated engineering, I did that for two years, and then went in a completely different direction. Now, you know, you know, I was at a community organization recently where we celebrated graduating seniors, and three of the seven that we were celebrating graduated out of the, with the CNA, which I was very proud for our district. I mean, that, that made me feel really good. And they were all going on to school, to a couple of different colleges, but Three Rivers was one of them, which, I don't know if the state funds that, or how that's funded.
It is.
It is great that we have that, which is a, essentially free for most people, place to send, you know, people that are interested in nursing. And then I'll also say, we, you know, in the teaching profession, I'm sure you've seen lots of people that graduate in teaching, and then they do, you know, they maybe start for six months, and then realize it is not for them, and then, you know, maybe they go off to be an attorney after that, or something like that. You know, go to law school. But, but having this experience, like, you know, my son is, you know, he did some student teaching in his junior year of high school, and whether he thinks teaching is for him or not, to have that experience and to save a lot of time in college, because maybe kids are learning what they really don't want as well.
That's true.
In some of these pathways. I mean, maybe somebody in nursing doesn't like blood, and they'll have to figure something else out. And, and learning that in high school, that is, that is another lesson to learn, so. So that's, that's it. I just wanted to say that I really appreciate that we are, that we are offering all of this to, to our kids. So, thank you. Matthew?
I kind of sort of wanted to align myself with what Dean said. I love the idea of what we're doing. I would offer a slightly alternative version as an overlay for your consideration. Call it whatever you want, career pathways, it makes a lot more sense than calling it life pathways. But to me, it is really life pathways. If you look at getting people interested in serving on council, on committees, on this board, it is like pulling hands' teeth. The idea of community service and looking beyond the economic functions of life is getting rarer and rarer. You look at your Lions Club, look at your Rotary Club, they're shriveling on the vine, not because they don't do good things, but because we are doing too much training and not enough education. And so, as we do career pathways, which for me is a, there is education in it, but it is really focused on the financial pathway for the future. I would love you guys, we were chatting today, I was with Susan, talking about what we're going to come, we're going to talk about tomorrow at the Policy Committee, and one of the lines that she had in the draft policy mentioned the word ethics. And I said to Susan, you know, maybe I'm, I have never heard the word teaching ethics in the board, never had it, and yet it's something that's very important to all of us. So I will hope that we'll continue to do what you're doing so well, and it is a congratulation, it's not a criticism. But think about how you can begin to weave in sense of community responsibility. You know, you use the word purpose, you know, what is the purpose of life? It's far more than a job. A job is necessary, a career is necessary, but careers aren't linear anymore. You can have three, four, five careers in a lifetime, so learning about purpose, what is your purpose? How do you envision your life? And let the kids discover that it is indeed a career, but it's so much more. You may be doing it already, but I wanted to articulate that in the hope that if you're not doing it, you'll consider doing it and working with the superintendent to make it happen. Thank you so much for what you're doing.
Mike?
Thanks. Thanks for the presentations and for being here. We present several great layers of experiences and of counseling and of opportunities, internships and others, that the students have. As I was listening to, I think I had a first question, I think it's been answered. My first question is, does every high school student have to sort of declare or pick a career pathway? My sense is, what I'm hearing from now is, is no, but that these opportunities are there for them. Is that the correct way of saying that?
Yeah, I would say that, you know, the intention or the goal is for students to, to identify a pathway through their, through those surveys that they completed. That being said, I think we're very careful in how that's worded, because you don't want them to feel like they're locked into something. It's just that if they have identified something and we have that conversation, you know, how do we make sure then that your courses align with that, if that's what your long-term goal is? Okay? So if we have a student who has, you know, and actually, so, some of the surveys, the results come back and they can have like, three areas, right? That there's, that they indicated are areas of interest. So how do you help them figure that out? So it's more of, all right, well, if we're able to say that we can offer you these courses and, and these experiences, is this something you want to pursue? Where do, you know, what is your, if, if, in this conversation now, what are your thoughts after high school? You know, we start the conversation freshman year, but know that that conversation evolves year to year, because if you, if we were to look back with some of the kids, they might say one thing freshman year, change it junior year in our junior planning meeting, and then sometimes, you know what? Come back in the fall of senior year and they've changed it again. So I think that that's okay. So it's more of, yeah, let's, let's help them by saying, take these interest surveys, see what your results are, and kind of make them feel a little bit excited about it, because it's more of like, hey, what, let's see what my responses indicate, you know what I mean? But they're not locked into something.
Right.
That would not be fair to do. I think that it's more of, if they are, you know, I have a couple students that they're like, this is what I want, and they did not deviate. But that's a couple students, right?
And I, I'd love to add on that, we think of this as comprehensive K through 12. So there is a lot of exploration with these, with these interdisciplinary, you know, magnets or intra-district magnets. And then the middle school has a plethora of different experiences with Project Lead the Way, with, you know, arts and music and, you know. So I feel like our kids are dabbling a lot and making choices, and even having electives in freshman and sophomore year, this board had made sure that, you know, we really looked at the schedules to say, they could take an elective, so they weren't so, you know, married to eight courses that were all core courses, so they could have an elective. And then, you know, start thinking about, really, what are those things that really are, you know, they're good at, they love to do, and that could lead to a career?
So students don't, high school students don't have to declare?
No.
A career cluster?
No, no. So it's, it's, it's not like that, it's just, you know, we are in, in the development phase of like, another type of planner. You know, there, there was a time when the high school utilized them a while back, I wasn't in the high school at the time, I was at the middle school, but they had said that, you know, they would use them when we were really, we were required to have these student success plans, and, and so that was part of that. And I think with everything else that came up, it kind of got pushed aside, but now we're kind of bringing that back so that we can help create this a little bit more, make it organized for the students and for parents, because I think it would make more sense when you have that conversation at home, like, this is what I'm going to take freshman year, and this would lead me to do this in the sophomore and junior year. And depending on the student's, you know, trajectory, it is good for them to know, because there are certain courses that build off of others, and if they want to say junior year that there's classes they need to take, or they want to take, there's prerequisites ahead of that. So how do we make sure they get those prerequisites in, stuff like that? So, yeah, don't have to declare a major in high school.
Okay. Thank you. Well, that's what I was wondering about, but I thought you had answered it.
No, no.
And those progressive discussions are very, very useful as the students grow. Just two things, I'm an environmental scientist, and so that health sciences, I thought, oh, that could have and environmental sciences, and, and there's some job opportunities there. With the arts, business, and communication one, I see that as inclusive of, like, you know, drawing, you know, we're surrounded by that right here, photography, and then, you know, music, that's a very strong program. I know some of our graduates are going off this year just into both of those areas, is wondering if there could be explored some, some ways to, to get like, community ties in that way too. Because I think they're sort of there with like, for instance, marching band or orchestra and, and things like that. I'm not as aware of things with arts, but, but rather than just going directly to a business-minded thing, but to help the talented students have connections into the community, not just in a monetary way into, into a job, would be very helpful.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned that, because I know that we're, we've been trying to tap into our resources, meaning in the building, which is our teachers and their connections, because I think, you know, that those are areas we need to grow more in terms of building those pathways, so.
And we had Eugene O'Neill Theater come to the Grattan Middle School Career Expo, which was a new kind of connection for us. I know we've done stuff with them over the years, but it was almost like a cold call, like, I reached out and, and they were like, yeah, we would love to come. And sometimes, like, you have those initial experiences with a new partner, a new community partner, that lead to other opportunities that you can take advantage of. Junior achievements like that, like, we started with an event, and now it has the potential to turn into other things. I just want to say one of, Northeast Academy does a lot with Flock Theater too, which is another newer partnership in the district, but that's another one we could look at that may have opportunities we can, we can take advantage of.
Right, I was remiss in not mentioning drama. I know a lot of our drama, high school students went and did playing Clinton, was much of the starring cast, which is quite impressive. Just a small thing on arts, having looked at it as a parent, art itself, it's hard to kind of trace a line towards, to honors in art, whereas you can do that very easily with, with band and, and with music and orchestra, so that, that's something I think, on a curriculum committee, we should talk about sometime. But then, one thing that's brought eye-opening to me, it must have been a couple of months ago when we had the discussion about the personal finance course, was the availability, I think it's, is it Perkins Grants? Is it Perkins Funds? And so, the high schools use that before, for instance, I think for some of the stoves that are, that are culinary, and then it's used for transportation, for internships and some field trips with classes, which it's, it seems like it's a great source of funds to do these sorts of things. So maybe you could comment on that, but also, my understanding from that presentation was that you, the teacher, to be able to access those funds, the teacher needs to have a certain, like, a business certification, I've forgotten exactly what it was.
CTE certification.
CTE. And, and so I think as we are hiring new people, we should think towards that as well, because it, it all boils down to transportation costs, like we heard about special education, and with field trips always, almost always, unless they come to you, well, field trips, you should go somewhere else. And then internships, it's all about transportation costs often, and getting those, those Perkins Funds and others, is very useful, I think.
That's how we got the CNA kids to Northeast Academy, was with Perkins Funds. Just to make a small example of that.
Yeah, and I think at the high school, we probably only have a couple of teachers that are CTE certified, maybe it's more than a couple.
We have a department.
Yeah.
Department.
But then not all the personal finance teachers.
I don't know who teaches. Personal finance through the state has been very flexible. We've had CTE teachers teach it, but you can also have math teachers, you can have a variety of teachers teaching it.
Yeah.
So, a little flexibility in certification with that one.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Exciting, exciting work.
Thank you.
So, reports and information from the staff, interim director of finance. Ray.
And welcome aboard Rita. This was her first full day.
Oh, yes.
And she's still with us.
Thank you.
Yeah, we would like to.
And still excited.
We're very excited to have you with us.
We're all excited.
We are.
Nobody's excited as much.
And she was very grateful to have you, Ray, by her side. She mentioned that tonight, that, so we really appreciate you hanging and helping with the transition, so thank you.
You can leave in another eighteen months, it's okay.
What we've got now, we were asked to generate an updated summary here. The summary that was sent out was generated on the seventeenth. This is as of this morning. Now, I want to make sure that, can everybody see what I just put out here?
And I think, did, did Mike, did you get one of the copies?
I have, yes. I'm writing my notes on the, on the copy, but then I note that Matthew has a six-pager expenditure report, which is like exactly parallel to the one from the, the last meeting. It's dated six twenty-three, twenty-five. So if, so I know that exists, like, like both the summary that we have up here and the expenditure report dated six twenty-three, twenty-five, both of them are at that date to be added to our minutes, and I don't know if you can do this at this point, but to the, the agenda as well, so.
I did not send out the expenditure report six twenty-three, twenty-five. I sent out, I sent out a summary.
Right. I don't know where.
You gave it to me.
I don't know.
I don't know. It might've been with my things, yeah.
So, so I guess, I guess there is one?
Well, I don't know if that's the correct one, so.
Well, it says expenditure report six twenty-three, twenty-five. It is exactly the same format as we had in May, so please send that out to the board. Thank you. And include it, I mean, I'd like it included in the, the minutes as well. I guess I'd have to hold it up and say that we have it right here, six pages.
I, I know what it is because I generated, but I did not send it out to the board as part of my official packet.
Yeah, we didn't get anything as part of the official packet except the, the paragraph summary, so we didn't even get this.
We have a leaker.
Hi. You won't be included in the minutes.
Right. I just, I'll just, I'm derailing this right now, but at the last meeting, we asked for more frequent updates, particularly towards the close of the year, we didn't get that. And then at the next regular meeting, got less information than we usually get at a meeting. And in terms of communicating where we are, I think this, it falls far short. And what we're looking at now is here, we got it emailed at two o'clock in the afternoon because I sent an email the day before. It shouldn't be like that. We should have.
So, I think there's some explanation though.
Detailed information that's consistent from month to month so that we can track things.
So, I think, Ray, you do have some explanation, and I put it in there, that we were in the middle of a payroll last week, and that the numbers, you know, are more accurate as we go along. But this summary absolutely shows that we're, you know, what, as Ray has been saying, we're in a good place as we go through, and it won't really be until middle of July, and even Rita had said that's true, that you're, you're going to get better accuracy as you go along, and things that are encumbered on fold, and that things are paid out. So did you want to add to that, Ray?
The only thing I do want to add is the, even today, what this report that you're seeing now changed as of late this afternoon because we're running a heat today, we're making payments. So this is a dynamic number that's going to change almost on a daily basis every day this week. So I need.
That's why.
I draw lines in the sand, I can generate reports, but they're not going to be the true picture every day that I give it out.
But that's, that's why at the last meeting, I thought several members clearly asked for weekly updates at this time of year, or bi-weekly.
There's a lot of work being done. We've lost some personnel, so it, we're really stretched. So we're trying to do the best we ve, we can.
That's been the story, but these, you guys already had these reports or maybe generated them. We should, we as a board should get this information. This level of detail is exactly what we build budgets on and what we look at expenditures on too. So I'll, I'll stop there, but it is irritating that we get less information as we go along rather than more.
You've got more information from me than you've got from the last four business managers.
We got less information this.
You've got more information from me than any of the businessmen that you hired in the last ten years.
We, we got demonstrably less information in our meeting packet than we got last month at the regular meeting.
One time, one time.
All right.
If you'd like to come to my office, you can chat.
I'll see you on the back.
All right. Before we, we've got some questions from the board, but do you, do you want to do a summary before we?
Yeah.
Go to questions, Ray?
I, I'm done with my summary.
All right. Jen?
Thank you, Mike, for bringing that up. It was the same concern I had when I opened the packet, and I did not, it's a financial summary, and all I got was written information, and you know there's a concern by this board of what's the available funding. And so, once again, we were not provided, you know, like a detailed information. So I was very happy to get this, the pink sheet, not realizing that there's more information available that was not shared. So it's just a concern that, you know, like Mike mentioned, we always hear it's a payroll issue, right? So as, everything can't always be a payroll issue, that things are going to fall apart. I don't know how often we run payroll, whether it's twenty-six times a year.
It's not an excuse, Jen. It's a fact.
Okay. Then we, as an organization, need to review and understand, and looking forward to working with you and your ideas of what we're going to do regarding payroll. Do we outsource it? Do you hire other, you know, other? So, looking so forward to working with you in the upcoming, you know, sessions, so, because the excuse, I don't believe, and maybe I'm wrong, that it has always been a payroll issue in prior boards, in prior report summaries. That's all I have to say.
And I can tell you why, because they weren't trying to give you the amount of detail they're not trying to give you. That's the issue.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. So if I give you more detail, I'd have to have cleaner data to offer. So I'm not trying to eke review or, or put anything behind you. I'm trying to give you the latest and best detail I can.
Yes. Latest isn't necessarily more important. We need to come up with a schedule, what's end of month, you know, and even if end of month is, let's say, the last Saturday of each month, and then there's like three days at the end of July or at the end of June that falls into the next month, but we need to have, this is end of month reporting, and you pour it in, you need to realize that like, hey, three months at the end of June is now part of July reporting, totally fine. A lot of organizations do that. We, we as a board do not need, oh, this is the last minute information and it's like, but then your reports have no consistency of like, when we look from year to year to year. We need to develop, you know. So it's just something, and I'm, I'm glad you're trying to give us the latest data, so thank you for that, but it doesn't necessarily always mean to the last day, so thank you for the effort.
Yep. All right. Thank you, Jen.
Yep.
Matthew, Candine.
So, I guess I'll start by thanking you, Ray, because we have gotten more information from you than we've gotten in the past, for which, in spite of the dynamic tension of wanting more, I'm grateful for what we have. The glass is more half-full than it was previously. There is a repeated expression of a desire for a dependable scheduling, and we, we know we can, we can look going forward, I don't want to go back, we look going forward that we're going to have payroll at least twelve times a year, if you do it once a month, twenty-four times a year, if you do it twice a month. So we know what those dates are going to be, and I think we can have a schedule set for the provision of the data that the board has consistently asked for that fits within the schedule so that the regular functioning with payroll does not interrupt the regular flow of information. I think that's what I hear my colleagues asking for. I think it's attainable. I look forward to your suggestions as how we can get there, Rita. But again, I want to express my gratitude for what we have, and, you know, our goal is perfection. We're never going to get there, but it's the pursuit of perfection that we want to work at. We want to continue to pursue perfection, even though we're never, we're never going to get there. We look forward to you. Next week will be perfect. Maybe.
Dean?
Thank you, Ray. Welcome, Rita. I'm going to be the contrarian. I like information, masses of information, as much as anybody else. At this time of the year, as we approach the end of it, my prime concern is, are we going to end it in the red or in the black? The details are nice to have. The details are nice to, nicer to have when we're figuring out next year's budget, so we know, have an idea of, you know, cash flows, surprises, things like that. At this point, just to, you know, play devil's advocate, at this point, if we had more information, just what exactly are we going to do one week before the end of the fiscal year? What decisions can we make? What orders do we give to the engine room at this point? So, yeah, more information would be nice, but I have a feeling there's some practical limitations in the, in the production of the, of the reports. So I'm not ready to climb aboard just yet. It's a long-winded way of saying, I'm, I'm content to see that as of at least two o'clock today, we were a hundred, it looks like if things hold, you know, we're going to be a little bit in the black. That, that's what I'm looking for at this time of the year.
And I would. That's where it was a million, five hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, and now at one fifty-five.
But we were told why that was going to change. He explained that at the time. He said, you see the million dollars now? That is not gospel. Things, things come and go, things change.
I understand, but as we get closer, we need to understand, and whereas we're putting these accruals together, we need to understand, and yes, we have system limitations. I too, that's why I was asking for more information. I'm nervous about that one fifty-five because, as Mike identified last meeting, you know, there was potentially like two hundred and eighty-three, or I can't remember, two hundred and thirty-eight, I can't remember the amount, that could have potentially impacted this. So I don't know if that was taken into account.
Well, we could ask.
That's the only reason why I'm a little concerned at this point. But one fifty-five, so far, that's good, assuming we didn't miss anything as we've heard in the past. It takes a long and very, a lot of details.
I can barely hear Jen, by the way.
Your microphone's not, oh, is it working?
A lot of opportunity for miss, missing something.
Well, I, I think you see at the grand total, we had an eighty-seven point nine million dollar budget. We have said seventy-seven point two-two-one. We have ten and a half million still encumbered, and then the one fifty-five, so there, and there's other things happening all the time. There's some things that are going back into our budget, you know, coming from the state. So it is, you know, a constant, and Rita, you had talked to us about that too, that, you know, we're sitting in a good spot by the looks of it.
What I'm going to say is, it's June twenty-third. We still have utilities that we won't have until the beginning of July. This is a projection, and I'm just talking about from where I come from. You know, we've always not given a final or even a projection until the mid-July. So, weekly is, is different for me, yes. And I, but I don't see, this is my first day, and I don't know what's in these conferences, and I'm going to find out obviously in the next couple of weeks, but on June twenty-third, you don't know what your utility bills are going to come in at, and it's ninety degrees outside of that. You know, so I'm just giving you an example of things that could fluctuate, and, but it does look like we're going, it's going to be in the black, but I, I just wanted to give you some perspective of what else, you know.
And really, but my question would be, is that I just had this, okay, great, understanding that the one fifty-five is dynamic, it can change. We won't know until mid-July, frankly, some, some years we don't know till some months later, once surprises show up, which I hope they don't anymore. Is, my question would be, well, how reliable do we think this is, given where we stand now? You know, that's, that's, that's what I would want to do with this number. I know it's going to move. What are the finance directors', you know, predictions as to just how, how volatile this number is? Yes, in general, it's going to be different, but, you know, that's all I really want to know. The actual guts of it, sure, that would be nice to have, but I'm not as dissatisfied as others are with this.
To be honest with you, I'm running reports. Every day I check. If fluctuation went way too much, I checked one. If it goes in another direction, I checked one. And it's, I have to stay on top of it. If I weren't confident in one fifty-five at this point, I would have published it. So right now, that's accounted enough. Next week, if I get hit with some unencumbered or un-purchased items, some special items, it could swing ten thousand, it could swing three hundred thousand. I mean, I'm, I'm being honest, and that, that's, but that's the, that's the nature of the piece. Right now, if I'm comfortable with it, I'm going to tell you I'm comfortable with it. That, that's the summary right now. Do I have to get the detail to get to the summary? Yes, but not all of that detail has been analyzed because I had to get it. And again, I'm being honest with you.
All right. All right, Ray, well, thank you for putting this together and getting it together today. I do understand some of the board members' concerns, and there, there was a lot of concerns last month, so it was a little bit surprising, being a board member, to not have anything, and we didn't have any, you know, any details to why we didn't have the numbers in this packet. So I'm sure that, I, I agree that, you know, things might be difficult in the office, and, you know, now that Rita is officially onboard, we, we're really looking forward to, you know, how this, how this plays out for next year and, and longer. So with that being said, I do appreciate this detail. There is just, you know, there's concern because we're at the end of the year and the numbers have been moving a little bit. But I'll recognize Matthew.
I'm done.
Oh, all right.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. So are there any other questions? All right. Moving on. Director, Building and Grounds. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you, Ray.
And Rita does have a, a long way to travel, a little bit of travel, so I said she could get going too. Thank you.
Okay, so, regarding, I guess first of all, I wanted to know that we had some difficulties this morning, so we did not get the charging stations shut off this morning, because I thought we would, it's planned tomorrow morning, because our electrician should be in tomorrow morning, and we'll be shutting the charging stations down.
Are there any signs, saying anything about?
What signs?
What do they say? Do we know? Yes.
Say that they've shut off.
No, no power.
Go someplace else. Parties are open.
Not on our dime.
All right. I have a quick question since we're talking about charging stations. Are there any third-party vendors that might take our charging station, put their own in, and so, so maybe kind of hand it off to someone else where it's a paid service that we don't really have to kind of manage? really have to kind of manage? Are there options for that type of thing with those?
The organization that the town is working with, they maintain them so that the town, or if we entered into it with that particular program, we would get a portion of the money, the balance of the money that goes then for maintenance and of course, a bit of profit for them for the sense they're going to have their charging stations. So it would, it would take, it would take most of it out of marketing for sure. I don't know if there's another company, I'd have to look around, see if it's something compared to what you have.
I would just be interested in, like, having charging stations, especially if they're paid, seems like people are driving electric cars, need good service. We already have some of the infrastructure and the cabling. So, so maybe this can, can become something that's not a revenue negative for the district, but also serve a purpose for people that, that need to fuel their cars.
Yeah, it sounds like a pretty good option. If we can find somebody to do that. As I told you previously, talking about using this organization that the town uses, it would cost us roughly, it was just an estimate that they gave me, roughly $2,500 per ground receptor or plug. So for every pole, there are two plugs on it. So it'd be $5,000 per pole. By the time you get done with that 25, $30,000 to do all the units that we have in the building, in our, in our buildings, when, when are you going to make money if you put that money upfront? So I will investigate, see if I can find whether there's a third party. I'll blow that quick.
Or even if there is, if there is an expected payoff, like, you know, we think that maybe this will pay for itself in three years if we make a little bit of the money, a little bit of money on the electricity or something like that. It would just be nice to have some kind of options rather than just turn them off. You know, for my, I don't know if anybody else has any comments.
Yeah, I was understanding that Stan, we're going to turn it off until we figure out what, if we figure out what we're going to be doing. So you probably already have heard previously that we have activities going on in all of our buildings. We have parks and rec in two of our buildings, and all the other, summer schools, et cetera. So as the staff is doing their summer work, they will be working around these programs that will be in our building. Those programs have always been cooperative previously, so I anticipate that that will continue. For instance, we may need to do the A Wing in a building, parks and rec is there now, we move them to B while we do that deep cleaning and maintenance that we need to do in that section of the building, move them around the building as needed. Most people that are using our buildings have been pretty cooperative over the years. We haven't had any problems with that. So that's where we are with the school buildings at this point. I also have a list of some of the summer projects that, that we're working on. They're not all of the projects that we're working on, but they are the major projects that we're going to be working on here. One of the first ones is the music room at Katherine Kolnasky. They've asked us divide that room, to divide that room into two sections so that they can have, I believe keyboards in one section. We're going to do as much soundproofing as we can with a wall, and so that they can continue with the classroom on the opposite side of that. So we have a plan for it. Don't have the materials yet, but we're planning on doing that this summer. The next couple of things are kind of intertwined. You've already heard about the manufacturing center at Fitch High School. Well, in order to have a manufacturing center at Fitch High School, that means that the stuff that's in the garage at Fitch High School needs to go somewhere else. So one of the places that we will have some room, all of it won't fit there, but would be Wells Road, which is a storage facility that we have presently. We're going to be going through that, culling all the equipment, et cetera. And any supplies that are outdated, we'll, we'll get rid of that stuff, make as much room as we can to get some of the things that are at Fitch High School garage into that space. We're also going to be working at Mary Morrison School regarding both the potential for robotics there, as well as getting ready for the potential for early childhood stuff in that building, which means that all, we have a lot of rooms over there that are essentially storage of materials that we've collected from the schools over the last few years, most of which I probably, will probably offer them. They're not really usable within our schools anymore, they're outdated. So we will offer them up to others and/or dispose of them with the superintendent's permission. So we have to, we have to take care of that stuff here soon in order to satisfy the fire marshal for one in that building. Also, the Pleasant Valley situation, we don't know when we're going to be booted yet, but the wood building, which was built in the 60s, when the Navy had a lot of, a lot of kids here, when, when they had a lot of people here at that time. That wood building was built and has about, I don't know, eight to 10 classrooms in it. Well, it's been a storage facility for us long before I got here, so that is also going to be cleaned out. And again, disposed of or moved elsewhere or donated somewhere with the superintendent's permission. So we'll be looking at what we call the frame building over there at Pleasant Valley School. Then, of course, we do gym floors, that's a big project. I'm still waiting, I'm working with a contractor now to find out. We're still waiting on the schedule when he's able to come to the high school and middle school and get those done. And then what we've done in the last couple of years is, we're not doing the elementary schools every year because they don't get the same beating that the high school does for us since. So they're on a every other year basis right now. So, I'm trying to remember, I think we will be doing, same as Mystic River, I think, but don't quote me on that. Don't quote me on that. I'll get, I'll get back to you on that. And I guess, yeah, those are major, those are major projects. And of course, the, the big one is, if the town wants Pleasant Valley School, that property, you know, we may get rushed along, quicker on that than I anticipate, but we're going to, we're going to start working on that very shortly, as soon as we get done with Wells Road so that we get the garage stuff taken care of. So we do have a little bit more time on the garage at high school because according to the consultant that we've talked to today, it looks like it would take nine months to a year to-
And it's a phased-in plan?
So, yeah. Got a little bit of time for that. Again, I don't want to wait till the last minute, so we'll be back.
Thank you. On Pleasant Valley, that wood building, I remember when it was closed, at, at the time, one of those buildings, not the main school, it may have been the wood building, may have been the older school there, there are other two buildings, other buildings. But one of them had a lot of hard copy student records in them. I think those, my understanding, those were going to be moved to the classrooms that are back here that used to be at.
Well, all, all the additional records that we had, they were actually, I don't remember them being at Pleasant Valley. It may have been a few boxes of them. They were in the basement of Fitch Junior High School when we moved them over here. So they are in, in the storage building out back here, yes.
Okay, so it's, it's not, it's not student records that are over at Pleasant Valley right now?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Great. And then the other part is, you mentioned like the nine to 12 months for the garage at Fitch, but then Pleasant Valley still currently has the robotics team taking out basically their gym plus maybe a couple of classrooms. Where are they going next year? I'm concerned about this because there is movement on the Pleasant Valley front.
Yeah, I think we're all concerned about it.
Huh?
I don't know where they're going, I think they're going to end up at the high school and is it, the consultant again was asked today about sharing that space with, sharing the machine, the new machine shop essentially with robotics, that portion of it. And of course, then they would have to have some sort of gym space in order to, have you been to a robotics competition?
Yes, oh yes.
Yeah, so it's usually in a full, the competitions are in a full gym with a very large field, but they can actually practice on half a field. So I know that when the, when the program was at Fitch High School before it went to Pleasant Valley, they worked out of the wood shop and there was also a metal shop down there at the time, and then went to the gym space or the space that's outside the, on the backside of the auditorium by a generator, and there's a, there's a larger hallway over there. So they would run the equipment over there and then, of course, pack it all up and put it away each night, which again, you're unpacking things for half an hour, 45 minutes, doing your thing for a couple hours, then packing it up again for another hour and then starting over again. So they may have to make some adjustments if that's where it ends up.
Well, and we looked into Mary Morrison, but the fire marshal put a kibosh on that.
Really?
That you could not use that space because they don't have the fire, it's not updated in fire and the sprinkler system.
Oh, but Pleasant Valley has it?
No.
No.
Pleasant Valley doesn't have it. Pleasant Valley is, I mean, it's a district, it's a different fire marshal.
Is that true? Is that, is that really?
Well, it's been, it's been at Pleasant Valley and it was allowed at that time. However, going to Mary Morrison, it's a port bridge, and that fire marshal won't allow it without sprinklers in there.
So we've looked at what would it cost for sprinkler systems and I don't know if he ever-
One of the mentors or assistant-
Coach.
One of the coaches has found a, like a portable sprinkler system. So I called, so I haven't actually talked to him yet. So I want to get that to the fire marshal, see if the fire marshal will accept that in the building. And if he does, you know, looking pretty good. If not-
I think ultimately-
For Mary Morrison?
For Mary Morrison.
Yeah, yeah.
But ultimately, because they do work around the clock sometimes, I would rather have them in the safety of the high school than in these leftover schools that are half-empty, you know, and just not secure the same way.
Well, we've got pre-K at Mary Morrison, so it's hopefully a secure-
Well, no, we don't have pre-K yet.
Or, you know, we have, we have, we have students at Mary Morrison currently.
No, they, we have ECAT, which is the Early Childhood Assessment Team, and they come with their parents during the day. So the, the children come to be assessed with their parents during the day.
Not every day.
Not every day.
So there's no classes at-
No.
At Mary Morrison? Now food services are there?
Mm-hmm.
And they don't use the gym, I would guess?
Yeah, they do for, when they, well, we've used it for different functions. When our bus company had their big meeting, we used the gym there. And he has a big food service, Safe Serve class that he does in there, so.
But that falls under continuing use, I would guess, in some broad respect rather than having-
Oh yeah.
Having machining and-
Well, he's saying it's essentially a manufacturing center when you're doing that. That's his interpretation of the robotics. He says it's manufacturing.
Yeah, it, I can speak to the, like, having a sustained space, like, maybe the garage is where they do a lot of the machining, but then having that space where all the, they can actually, you know, practice. It's, it'd be better than a gym that's not being used rather than one, one that is being used, for sure.
Right.
So, and they might be able to get sponsorship and grants for, for things like that too. Good connections.
We're definitely, they need to find a home.
Yeah, but-
Outside of Pleasant Valley.
But we, we need to help them. I mean, that's an award-
Oh, that's right. I'm not saying they have to do it alone.
We need to find them a home.
Well, we have been very involved in supporting them, to tell you the truth. Yeah.
Matthew, then Dean.
So Susan, I'm going off topic a little bit, but I'm kind of curious, do we have any sense of when we're looking at the new submarine coming in this year? Is it two years? How much time do we have before?
They're, they're building the submarines. They're building the Columbia class now, and they will continue to be building them over the next 12, 20 years.
Final question.
Yeah.
When, when might we expect? I'm told that we bring in the crews about a year before the board is-
Mm-hmm, that's right.
To start the training. So there's somewhere we can find out the current projections of when that first move might come in, because that will give us a horizon to take a look at Mary Morrison, at what needs to be done. And I think in terms of planning, it's better to start and know now what our horizon is. We don't need to start work on it because we don't want to find out six months or nine months before they come. It would just put a terrible burden on Sam.
So between serving on the board at the Nautilus and having the captain constantly give me updates, and Miranda Chapman, who's the liaison, we are getting information. For instance, there's a new submarine coming in to EB, and if they're there for two years, right now they're there for one, but if they're there two years, families are coming. So we kind of are battening down the hatches for possibly October, families coming, if that should come up to fruition. But the government doesn't even know the extent of this particular submarine coming in. But they will be giving us the best that they know at the time, information, as they start rolling in.
Well, that's helpful because what I'm hearing you say though, I'm filling in words, I'm not putting words in your mouth, is we could conceivably have a crew coming in for whatever the submarine is at EB if there's a second year. We could conceivably be having at least one, if not two, crews coming in, in October of this year.
Well, this is a Virginia class submarine coming to-
So would it be one crew or two?
That's a good question.
Could we try to find out?
Yep, yep.
Because if there's work that needs to be done, we need to give Sam as much lead time as possible to figure out what needs to be done.
Right now, I know that it's one year, but that could change is what I've been-
I understand, I understand. But all we can do is get what, what the current view is.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah, that's true. It's, it's a lot to keep up with.
It's not going to be easy, but I want to make it less difficult.
Thank you.
Thank you Sam. So.
Do you think we might have some information in a month or so? Is there a way to do-
I could have it as early as next week, but they might not have, they might not know yet. They'll just say, "I'll tell you when we know," so.
Explain to them what our concern is.
Before October 1st.
We need a little bit of guidance, we need a little bit of guidance.
Yeah, yeah.
Otherwise, they're going to have kids, we're not going to have a place for their school.
Yeah, they know that. They know, they're, you know, they tell us as much as they can when they know it. So it's Uncle Sam.
Then maybe we need to prepare for October if we can't get better information because we don't want to get short and have classes with 30, 35 kids in them because we don't have a place for them. Maybe we need to plan for October.
I will see what I can find out. No, no, I understand. Yep.
Yeah, if you can just get us some numbers in a couple of weeks so we have something a little bit more firm to go on rather than just, you know, making assumptions.
I'm all for-
I'm, yeah.
As, as much as information as we can.
Right.
I'm all for hope and prayer, but we need to sometimes pass the information through.
Mike?
Yeah, just have a quick question for, I'm glad to hear about the splitting of the music room because I think the teachers have spoken to that. When that originally came up, I thought, there might be HVAC implications when you split a room? Was, is that an issue in this case or?
Fire code issues?
Yeah.
HVAC, yeah, that's what I have to put together.
So, so, like, that's part of the plan?
I was over there with, I was over there with my fire guy this morning talking about a smoke hazard, et cetera, all that sort of thing, so.
Right. So do you think it-
There are sprinklers that have to be moved. We can't move those, the company has to come in and move those. So there are things like that that need to be done in order to actually erect the wall.
And you don't think it could grow into a CIP level? It should be, be okay? Okay, thanks.
I wish, I wish my carpenter wasn't going to be retired. I've got a couple of letters of retirement this past-
Oh, did you?
Carpenter, my locksmith, my carpenter, is there a third one? Can't remember.
Oh, the locksmith too, there's already seem to find.
All right, one more question from Dean.
Yep. Yeah, it's not a question, I, it's, again, an observation. I remember when the robotics team was considered the top team and they were living out of a closet. That's, that was the narrative, you know, what's our top team doing living out of a closet? Living at the high school that way. I would, I imagined that over time, this would be ironed out, that the robotics team would have a home at Fitch. And I blame myself partly, as much as I can blame anybody else, for not actually riding this thing and making sure that the thing happened. So all I can say is it's a shame that we, that we're once again facing the question of, where's the robotics team going to go? I don't know why they've been treated like vagabonds all these years. We keep saying it's a, it's a top team, we should support them, and we never actually make it into a, into an agenda item. That's, that's my regret. And I really thought that I would be like, you know, Mr. Robotics Team on the thing, and I've fallen down on that, so my apologies. But life happens. It's just a shame, it's 2025 and we're still wondering, where's the robotics team gonna go? It should not be that way. They should have a, a whole room to themselves at the high school at least.
Well, that's part of the game plan with this manufacturing center and taking the existing, you know, spaces and upgrading them, so the robotics team could work out of them. It's the space, the gym space that's the concern.
When I got here 11 years ago, they actually didn't have the closet. We built, that was one of the first projects, was to build them closets.
A storage closet, they said, yeah, yeah.
Crazy.
Thank you, Sam. Can I just, I just got a message from Ray. He said he'll be sending you the corrected file. That must have been something that was a preliminary, that we were gonna look at again tomorrow. So if you could just hold off on sending that, because I'll send you the corrected version that correlates and to be distributed tomorrow, so. Yep. I don't know if that came from my desk or not. Where you got it, Matt?
The one question I have on that is, can the file tomorrow be attached to the minutes? Is that okay rules?
Your request?
If, if it's this, it can be.
Yeah, if it's that, modified a little bit, corrected, we'll say.
I doubt it needs to be correct, I mean, the expense report-
Ray, Ray just sent us a message saying that that's a thing-
That is going to be corrected. That was probably my personal preliminary committee, so I guess.
My question is just, in Robert's rules, can we attach, since we talked about attaching something? All right, hang on, a second. In Robert's rules, does anyone know, can we attach something that comes after the meeting?
The thing with minutes, and I'm not quoting Roberts, I think the thing with, minutes are supposed to reflect what happened at the meeting, right? In a summary, minute fashion. And so attachments to the minutes would be the agenda, of course, what we're supposed to discuss, what we actually did discuss, materials that were actually reviewed. Technically, if we haven't reviewed the, what you're talking about, the sheet you're talking about, it should not be attached to the minutes. I'm not against having it, but I don't think it should be part of the minutes, because in the future, someone could say, well, it was in your minutes, it was included in your minutes, therefore you must have considered it, however unlikely that possibility is. It was in your minutes, therefore you must have considered it. Did you not see, I'm just hypothetically creating a situation, did you not see this brewing? Well, no, we actually didn't see it, then why is it in your minutes? So I would say, don't include it in the minutes.
All right, does that seem reasonable, that you might, that, that we have agreement that we will get the document, and maybe we can discuss it in a future meeting, but this could be included in the minutes?
Yeah, but the pink, the pink one is, will be in the minutes, right? And the other one is exactly as Dean's saying.
We'll call it a draft for right now, but it's not really ready for publication and we'll have a corrected one tomorrow.
I mean, we could photocopy it and hand it out, but-
But we didn't do that. We didn't do that for today's meeting, no.
I did, I did take pictures, because I, I am interested in the information, so.
All right.
But just know it's a preliminary, it's not.
All right. All right, well, we do appreciate Ray for the, over a year now, I think for right around a year now that he's been here through a lot of highs and lows, so he's not on hopefully anymore, but at least doing something else, but, all right. Committee reports, policy.
We meet tomorrow.
All right.
It's quick.
Yeah.
Yep, all right. Curriculum, we did not have any response in curriculum. So finance and facilities.
We had a meeting June 3rd, it was attended by all three members, also including superintendent, Ray, and Ernie, and Christina Ruberg, and Clint, and Sam, and Beth Washington, as always. So we had a director of finance report, talking about Treehouse. Bev had a question about a $280,000 budget entry. That was mistakenly put in as a placeholder, he explained, it was not properly distributed, and that has been corrected, that was just an artifact, apparently. We got Sam's report on the CP program, the, i.e. the community eligibility provision. Ernie also spoke about that. Facilities rate use schedule, I guess we have to update our, our rate schedule for use of the facilities. They seem to be out of, out of whack. Discussion about porta potties. Jay brought up the, the issue of EV chargers, the perennial thing that we talk about. Janet asked about the status of the Charles Barnham Roof Project. We've got changes, resubmissions, et cetera. Jay suggested we contact our state reps to go through the red tape and bureaucracy. That meeting took all of an hour and a half.
All right, I have a question. The discussion on the $280,000 placeholder, I was, I think I watched that meeting, and I was under the understanding that we were gonna get some kind of report or some, something written down on what happened with that, as well as budget modifications that were done in June or July, that were resulting from that mistake in the, in the budget that was passed by the board. So are we expecting a report?
Well, and the minutes reflect that he, he said he would send the full board the affected object codes and amounts.
So that would be, all right, so do we have, can you give us a, when that might be done to them?
Not until I talk to them.
All right.
I will follow up on it.
And my understanding, so, was to include the, the object codes that were changed in addition to that.
Right.
Later on, all right. Ad hoc budget, budget procedure, to not meet. Learn.
That's Bev usually.
All right. Athletic fields.
Ian.
Ian. Trails.
No report from added trails or library.
All right. All right, so on to action items. The consent agenda, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion, points of clarification will be allowed.
Move the consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
Second by Matthew.
I have one, one correction to make. On the May 27th meeting, under comments from citizens, Mrs. Bordelon asked why all sports are not being treated equally.
All right.
Playing the part of Andrea tonight.
I know, I'm channeling Andrea.
All right.
Hold on, I think maybe there was-
I've got one.
I have, I have another correction on that one as well. I would like some clarification, it says on page four, review of items on the nine, on the 51925 tracker sheet. We've got the yeses and nos, and I was at the meeting, so I know what the yeses meant and what the nos meant, but it's not clear to a reader of the minutes who comes to look at, so.
Which, which minutes are you on?
I'm on May 27th, page four, item five, top of the page, review of items on the 519 tracker sheet, not clear the meaning of the yes/no vote. I mean, I know what it was, I was there, but it should be clear for the reader in the future. So if you could just put in another sentence to indicate that the, I believe the yes vote was for a reduction, and the no vote was against a reduction, whatever the truth is, that's-
I'd go along with that.
Yeah, I would, how about attaching the actual tracker as well? So it has numbers and other stuff on it, please.
I'm okay with that.
All right, so.
At the bottom of the page, C4, vote on amendment, yes two, no six, abstain zero, and it's marked passed. I would think that a vote that's two in favor and six opposed would not have passed. I would say that it failed.
The longer we think about it, the more apparent it is that that too needs clarification. Or correction.
Or correction, so if, if you could just, maybe Joyce can help you out on that one.
Which one are you on?
I'm on page, item number, Roman number of six, item C, new business, number four. There was a motion to amend, and I made that motion, and I dearly was, my, my heart was broken when it was failed, two in favor and four, six opposed, it broke my heart.
Yeah.
But it should say failed.
All right. While we're on that one, I think under response to comments, it said Mr. Sherman.
Oh, no.
I think that should be Sherman.
It should be Sherman.
We want that record to be corrected.
Please, please. My wife would be much gratified for your comments.
Unless there wasn't Mr. Sherman.
And-
Or Mr. Peabody.
My colleague also wants to make a change on the motion by Whitney and, Whitney and Thomas to approve the observance of Juneteenth for 12-month employees, there should be a second E before the S. Andrea, you'll be proud of us.
She's there? Is she, yes, she's on?
She is there.
All right. Are there any other amendments? So we should vote on, so should we just vote on the amended?
That's correct.
Correct.
As amended, all right, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so all, all supporting the amended consent agenda?
Hi.
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 All right. Jay, is he still on?
I didn't see him, do you see him?
All right, I think Jay, I think he fell off. All right, so, yeah, I know. All right, old business, discussion and possible action regarding a second reading of policy P5112.2 admission requirements, attachment five. Anyone want to make a motion? Ken?
Motion to approve policy P5112.2 admission requirements as a second reading.
Second.
All right, discussion?
I think you can see on page two of four, the green letter, language that gives it more clarity. I know Lauren is on there, I don't know if Lauren, you have anything else you'd like to add? Because you've been working carefully on this and based on practice that's happening in the enrollment office?
No, I think what, what is in front of us is exactly what is needed, and I apologize to you. Was there a question that I missed?
No, just, we're going for the second read, and I, I had just said that the green language is really giving it more clarity.
Yes. Yeah, it's, the green, the green wording really just tightens up the language to make it, you know, more concise for families as they're registering and, and our policy. It comes from, you know, by tightening that language up, it comes from experiences that we've had where, you know, there was a need for those small changes, like as an example, the current residential lease agreement, just as an example, versus one that's a year or two or five years old. So it just makes, it tightens it up just to make it a smoother process for families registering.
All right, Mike?
Yeah, just, let's say, we're already really close on this one, so thank you for the policy committee, and you're continuing to work to get this-
Tighten it up.
Yeah, just exactly as you'd have it be, and if you do see any issues with it in the years ahead, just please come back to us.
And just to add, and because I don't think you can see it on your page, we did link the residency act, David, that we had talked about last time, so when they do go into the policy, they can open up the, the actual document there to read exactly what's needed. And I don't know if that's obvious from what you have in your hand.
Thanks for pointing that out, Lauren.
All right, yeah, I know we spent quite a bit of time on the first read on this as the board, so I appreciate this. So any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
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 All right, opposed, abstained, all right, passes. Six to zero to zero. All right, second item, discussion and possible action regarding a second reading of policy P5118, non-resident attendance, attachment number six. Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll move that we adopt policy 5118 for a second reading.
All right, Matthew, second?
Second.
Again, after a discussion with the board and tightening up the language, bringing it back to policy, you can see the green, which we've added, and the red, which was taken out.
All right, again, I think this is another one where we, we had quite a bit of discussion.
Right.
Just the only thing I would add is my real thanks to Lauren for her work on this, it made it so much easier to have-
Yes, thank you, Lauren. Yeah. And living this, living this and working within, you know, with the registrar, because who reports to her, has been really helpful, because she's able to fine tune and see what's really needed as people come in and are registering, their children.
All right, any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
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 All right, opposed, abstained, all right, six to zero to zero. All right, no new business, information and proposals, non-action items, letters, communications, and comments by board members on meeting items, and any other items in their jurisdiction. Start with Matthew.
Okay, I want to, I have two items. I, we recall a month or so ago, Jay made a suggestion that we seek and reward employees for suggestions that lead to the achievement of operational efficiencies. Bring that up again, because that's really low-handling fruit. Perhaps, perhaps when you speak to Bev, you can ask if she would appoint one or two people to sit down with administration and figure out how we can move forward on that, so we have something in place in time for September when the employees come back.
Yeah, all right, yeah, that, that sounds like a great idea.
The second, the second thing I want to suggest, as I begin my wind down, is we've talked for several years about the advantage- talked for several years about the advantages that we've had when we did community forums. And so I'd like to suggest that we actively consider incorporating an annual autumn and spring community forum on topics defined as critical, critical utility to stakeholders. And just for the fun of it, I'll give three examples, though again, I think I'd ask if Bev might appoint a group to work with administration to come up with this. This is also low-hanging fruit. Three examples. What can parents or caregivers do to assure children safe use of electronic communication devices? Second one, how go out in public schools as integrating new technologies to support core education? Third one, parents and caregiver tips to support each student's academic, social, emotional, and ethical development. These are just meant to be examples. I'm sure there can be some other ones that could be as, as good or better. Pick one for the fall, one for the spring, maybe the auditorium, or I don't know, wherever you want to hold it. And let's start building the long-term communication links with the members of the community so that when it's a budget season, there's no doubt about how we are functioning within the community.
That sounds great. I think the communications committee is going to try to meet this in July, I believe. So we'll keep our fingers crossed. It sounds like a good, good topic for that.
And it's my intention to keep bringing a few of these things at each of the meetings, which you can, then do it as you want, because we're not going to get this done all this summer.
But if you can email that to Jay.
To the direction. I'd be happy to do that.
And you can CC Jen and I, who are on that committee, but those are, those are things to talk about.
Thank you.
Jay?
Nothing to report at this point.
Dean?
I've said enough.
Mike?
Just like to say, I intended, as many of us, the graduation, fish graduation, just wish the class of 2025 every bit of success and happiness.
My hand was sore afterwards.
Andrea, any?
Not this.
All right. Yeah, and I, I'll also echo what Mike said, congratulations to all the graduates. You know, it's a proud moment for, for district, having those many, that many graduates. All right, onward, advanced planning, future meeting dates and calendar items for board attention. I believe we are going to cancel the curriculum committee meeting for July 7. And curriculum committee, we really need teachers specifically, so it becomes difficult to hold effective meetings in the, in the summer months. Any other comments?
Yeah. So I was contacted regarding the possibility of, of canceling the July 1 finance facilities committee meeting. The alternative we came up with, I think, is to meet on the 15th. That's going to be a three meetings in a row kind of a thing for some of us, but.
So the COW is going to have a finance piece on the agenda?
Yeah.
I don't know if you wanted to do a finance prior to the 14th and then go into the COW because it would just be a repetition of what we do on the 14th.
Yeah, no, no, and I, I'm mindful of that. I think the 15th was settled on because I'm away.
Oh.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm away until basically the, the day before. No, 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 I'm coming back that weekend anyhow. So the 15th was chosen as a, as a matter of convenience and also because by the 15th we may actually have better numbers than we might have on the 8th or 1st.
So that's why with Bev and I talked about the COW on the 14th. We thought that would be a good time to add that agenda item on the finance.
Let me ask you something. Is Bev on board with the idea of having the 14th as basically having the discussion regarding the finances and skipping of the formal facilities meeting, finance meeting on the 15th or any other day in that month?
Well, she knows about the 14th was recommended and we have a, an actual tentative.
Because Madam Chair took me to task for allowing the cancellation of the 1st. My argument was on the 1st, we're not going to know any more than we know on the 30th.
But the 14th, we should know more. And so that's what we're planning. And we can always plan another finance meeting, you know, to follow up. We actually have one, well, we could put one in August if we needed it, early August. Well, I'm not available either. No, we didn't.
No, actually, I, I will be here on the 1st. Somebody wasn't going to be here. And your absence actually is, is of some consideration, but it's not critical. The question is, would we have anybody to talk to? Sam be here, would Rita be?
I agree with you though, Dean. I don't, I think we're going to have more viable information by the 14th.
I mean, by the schedule, we would meet on the 1st. We still have time to schedule something in July. Plenty of time to schedule something in July. We just need hours to schedule something.
If you need to, you still have time to un-cancel.
And to, yeah, to un-cancel, exactly.
I mean, by notice.
Yeah, I mean, basically Jen, me, Jay, that's, you know, I mean, we can meet and play tiddlywinks too and say we met, but I want to avoid a useless meeting. So, you know, what would we know on the 1st? If we met on the 1st like we're supposed to, what would we know on the 1st that, you know?
I, I talked to Rita and Ray about, you know, early that month, we knew, at that point, I thought that it was canceled. There is a town council meeting on July 1 about the EB donation that's on my list. So, but I think the 14th, they were both saying that that was a really good date because we will be able to give you a real full description. I don't want to waste anybody's time.
How about this? How about we keep the 15th open just in case? And if, as we head toward that week, if I get rumblings from above, count on a formal meeting schedule.
I just don't want to.
I want to stay out of trouble.
I know. Well, she knows about the 14th, that we have it on the list for everybody.
Yeah, the thing, the thing about.
It needs to be for everybody.
Yeah, the thing, the thing about how we're structured is there are nine of us max. If we were a body of, say, we were the RTM, you really have to have subcommittees because you can't have 40 people out of, I know you can have 40 people showing up at the RTM if you wish, but you can't have dozens of people showing up and doing all the business all the time. So, and what happens at the finance and facilities committee meeting is we get a report from Sam, which the cows get, and a report from the finance director, which the cows get. So, you know, it's not, it's not exactly the end of the world if the finance meeting, committee, you know, didn't meet. But I don't want to have useless meetings. Keep the 15th open. We have time to schedule a meeting.
I like that.
If we have to.
Yeah, I like that. Sounds good. Sounds like a plan.
I'm going to pencil it in and say.
Meetings with town bodies, I guess that's part of it. All right, suggested agenda items. I'll start this one by saying Bev wants to send a policy, review of the attendance policy. I believe the teachers union was discussing that, so I don't remember the exact wording of Bev's email, so.
I wrote to Bev and said to her, I would like very much to have the GEA explain their concerns before we begin to get into looking at language in the policy. They can do it either welcome to come in person, and we're not going to do it in June, so we're welcome to come in person in July, or send a written, written communication about their, their concerns and their potential solutions.
I can send that out to Lauren. I can send it out to the leadership.
Then, because it seems to me silly for us to start with deep language if we don't know what they have to say.
In how like our graduation requirements is possibly higher than all of their districts around us? Can you guys sit together? Is it Morrissey or Kefler?
It's, it's on for the cow. I was just checking that.
Oh, perfect. Okay, good.
So it's, it's a referral from last month or so, and it's on, it's on the cows referral list.
Technically, it would eventually come to policy, but I think policy would benefit from having you to fill the void as to what it means.
For, for which?
Basically for the attendance.
Attendance or the graduation?
I mean, pardon me.
Yeah, graduation.
The graduation.
That probably isn't, I don't know if that's policy.
Well, it is policy.
Yeah, there is a policy on graduation requirements.
We have, it has a numbered policy.
We do, we do have a numbered policy, but I think it would be.
It would be.
What we did should be informed by the elected governors.
All right, any others? All right, Dr. Ackerman, you have a motion for us.
Nine o'clock.
Motion, motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Andrea.
Adjourned at 9:05. Thank you.
Without objection.